Welcome to the City Council's September 15th Special City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with the City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce staff and city council members present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council Member Kat Carlton, City Council Member Betsy Nash, and City Council Member Ray Mueller. Staff present include our city manager, Starla Jerome Robinson, interim city attorney Kara Silver, and our city clerk Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. Welcome everyone again to this special City Council Meeting, September 15th. For members of the City Council, we ask that you remain on screen for duration of the meeting, controlling your own webcams and microphones. Staff will engage their webcams and microphones when making presentations and responding to City Council questions. For members of the public, for public comment periods for our agendized items this evening, the mayor will call for public comment following the staff report presentation. And at that time, you'll engage the hand feature in the top right side of your screen. That will alert us that you have a public comment on that item. You have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you'll be able to address the City Council at that time. And that concludes the instructions for this evening. Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda are presentations and proclamations. We have Item C1, Community Land Trust. To introduce this item is the Executive Director of the Valley Community Land Trust, Pam Dorr, and partner with Burlington Associates and consulting with Valley CLT. Pam and Davinka will introduce and present this item.
There we go. Can you hear me? Hi, thanks for having us. I want to make the presentation very short to respect your time. I know you're going to be online for a long time tonight. And I'll jump right into the presentation. Maybe we could even advance a slide when it starts so that we have a chance to jump in. I don't think I have control of the slides, so it'll just be a minute.
Before you begin, can you introduce yourself because we don't see anyone on screen?
Sure. So, so this is kind of a funny thing. I can't see the presentation either. Will that begin? Or should I do it without the presentation?
Looks like we're just waiting for Rhonda to queue that up.
Okay, sure. So, so I should tell you, I didn't start out to be a housing professional, although I've been doing housing for about 20 years. I started out as a clothing designer and worked for Victoria's Secret catalog for a long time in an odd job doing lingerie. So somehow I got to housing late in the game. And I have, I think my family off and on has really struggled with housing. And I think it's always been a really passionate thing for me. I'm a Samathea County native, and I think my family really chose to live here because it was affordable back a long time ago in the 60s and 70s. And, and because of that, I think I've always been really interested in how to make housing more affordable and how to make community, make it easier for people to live where they work. So that's kind of how I came to doing this. And, and primarily wanted to talk to you about Community Land Trust because it's an ideal way that cities' money can be invested one time with no reinvestment. The subsidy actually carries through in perpetuity, and no new investment is needed. Community Land Trust combines stewardship as a way to make it really affordable for families to stay well housed, but also give them the support they need. We all know that our lives change over time. We may lose jobs or become kind of in a credit crunch. All kinds of things can change. And I think one of the things that is, is pretty exciting is that Community Land Trusts support families. I think about disasters like the fires or COVID, and I know that we are really going to struggle through the recovery of that. You know, the... So it's been kind of interesting for me to be first out in the corporate world for a number of times. And then, can you guys, I'm getting a message that I muted, but I think you can hear me. If you can't, would you let me know?
We can hear you.
Oh, good, sorry. So, so let me just jump in, and I'm gonna, because we're so tight of time, and I don't want to make our presentation too short, I'm gonna go ahead without the slides and just kind of talk a little bit about basic CLT information so that I don't take up too much time today. The main thing I wanted to do was just, this is kind of following up for the Center for Community Innovation and Y-Plans Study for Housing Conditions on the Peninsula, and their recommendations primarily for preservation, production, and tenant protections. And, and I really want to respect, there we go, and I really want to respect the council's time so we can get on. So let's go ahead and advance if we can to the next slide. I do also know this is a tough time for a lot of us. Some of us are isolated living at home, some are affected by really bad air quality and fires. Some people have lost homes. So I just want to acknowledge this is a tough, crazy time in the world. And, and I appreciate that the council specifically wants to make housing better in this community. And, and I think land trusts are a perfect way to do that. I think the, the history of Community Land Trust movement in the US has been decades-long and, and quite successful. And I think this isn't something that has just started. There's a network of Community Land Trust providers nationwide that provide technical assistance and networking so best practices continue, and it's easier for communities to start out and start to really provide an opportunity for community and resident participation in governance for housing for the first time. I think addressing disinvestment and disenfranchisement that some of us feel when things around us are really rapidly gentrifying. I think the land trust model is almost ideal to include people. CLTs often have a board membership. It's typically a third of residents of those homes or apartments. And a third community members and a third corporate or nonprofits can be on the board. So typically, those are ways that community can participate in the governance and also really start to feel like they're part of, 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 almost like a groundswell of change that's happening. So CLTs are a natural partner also in COVID recovery for foreclosure prevention. And we really do that through stewardship of families and providing education around housing. I think typically when you're thinking about providing affordable housing, you're thinking about a low-income housing tax credit project that might take five years to develop and maybe a million dollars a unit. Community Land Trusts offer softer alternative that can be reproduced quicker, a little less costly, a lot less costly, and can provide a local preference, which I think a lot of us need when we want to make sure people are living where they're working. And I also just want to tell you a little bit about myself because I spent 15 years, even though I'm a Samathea County native, I left the Bay Area and I went to rural Alabama to provide a really unusual type of housing for folks. I moved to the area of the, from the area in the country where we have the highest wealth to the area where we have the highest level of people on disability and created a homeownership program for folks making about $700 a month and was able to help them understand and have the support they needed to become homeowners through education. So as a professional housing counselor, that's something that I have done for, gosh, 17 years now, which seems incredibly long, but has made a big difference in, in kind of how I approach working with families. So typically, I'll get right into the presentation. The CLT role is really to provide the community and staff, city staff, with options to provide affordable housing in the community. The CLT generally just lessens the burden of government because they're there to help execute the affordable housing strategy, and it's in perpetuity, which truly makes a big difference. No additional subsidy is needed. The CLT always works directly with the developer or can develop directly with the city staff. And those are things that, that make a big difference. Let's go to the next slide. And in general, so CLT can do rental and also ownership. The CLT's role in terms of ownership is that the CLT really shepherds that land under the improvement. Think of the improvement as a house or an apartment. So that land is always going to stay permanently affordable under community control. And that the land trust actually has a 99-year lease on that land. And then the homeowners can either own the improvement or rent the improvement above it. So that's typically how a CLT works. Let's jump to that next slide. And typically, the CLT just keeps the housing affordable because it's going to tie the improvement above the land to the paycheck or to the area median income. So if it's designated for 30% AMI, it's always going to be targeted to 30% AMI. And as AMI grows, the value of that property may grow slightly, but typically, it's going to be in perpetuity affordable to somebody at that income level. So it's always going to stay what we always call permanently affordable housing. The rents and the ownership's prices would always stay that way. And the CLT works to bring qualified renters and owners. And we offer year-round classes and constant contact with the occupants so that they know who to go to when something happens, if they lose a job, if they get behind, if something's changed, if they want to move. They have a constant person who's shepherding that process, so it's, it's not a surprise. Let's jump to the next slide. And obviously, all of you know AMI. I was a little surprised this year when I saw the jump of over $50,000 in annual area median income was a big jump this year. So I just threw this chart in here so you could see how it's adjusted by family size and also the different income categories. 30% or less is extremely low, 50% or less is very low, and 80% or less is low income. Let's jump to the next slide. The benefits, obviously, of living on CLT land is that residents really have that long-term security, whether they're renting or owning, and it's affordable in perpetuity. Plus, they have the stewardship of the land trust with them. Let's jump to the next slide. And the CLT stewardship for homeownership, it, it works for both renters and owners, and it's really to assist families in qualifying for the mortgage or rental. And then really making sure that the, when there is a change, that a qualified rental or buyer, renter or buyer is there for the next unit, and the unit doesn't sit empty, or that there isn't a long pause before the family is, is occupying that space. And then also really to avoid foreclosure. Virtually in the Community Land Trust world nationwide, it's very unusual for something to go into foreclosure, and it's because of that stewardship. Let's jump to the next slide. And obviously, the ground leases and responsibilities. This is very important for somebody who is entering into an ownership of land trust land. They can't refinance without permission because it has to be within the set guidelines, and that they can't do their own loan modifications. And I think that's pretty common sense. Let's jump to the next one. And CLT services, obviously, existing BMR units can be easily managed through the CLT or, and then, or transitioned into the CLC, CLT at the time of vacancy or resale. And stewardship can be provided to the residents. Let's jump to the next slide. Whoops, there's a typo, a couple typos that we thought you would enjoy. Sorry about that. And in general, the benefits of a CLT, what the city's accomplishing through the CLT is really to partner with the CLT stewardship is really an opportunity to serve the community through a permanent subsidy. So that subsidy is always going to remain and never needs to be renewed with additional money, which is pretty important for a lot of us. If we've seen sometimes properties turn in BMR and you need to have additional subsidy. I think the retention of subsidy is something that's really crucial, and then delivering stewardship to those families. I think we're about to run out of time, so let's go ahead and jump to the next slide. And some contact info, and then the last slide. I'd love to answer any questions. Also with me today, Dev Gatchis is with me from Burlington Associates. She provides nationwide technical assistance for community land trusts and can answer a lot of really technical questions. I did want to say, if you think we may want more in-depth just to study how a resale formula works or look at retention documents, I'd love to, we could even do a study session on that sometime if that sounds interesting.
Thank you, Ms. Dorr, for the presentation. Was Dev going to present any information as well?
No, I think it was just me presenting, and then we're both here to answer any questions that you have.
I was just gonna say, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. It's my pleasure to be here and to support Pam in answering any questions she may have. This is Dev Gatchis.
Thank you for introducing yourself. And are there any follow-up questions from the council before we go to public comment? Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. And I'd also like to make the brief announcement that all web form public comments were attached to the agenda and posted for your viewing as well as members of the public at 4:00 PM today. So at this time, we are taking public comment on Item C1, Community Land Trusts. If you have a public comment on this item, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. We'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the City Council at this time. And seeing no hands raised for this item, Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for Ms. Dorr, and that is, you said the way that the Community Land Trust is set up is one-third residents, one residence of the property, one-third residents of the community, and one-third residents of the nonprofit. So how would you do outreach to find the community members? How do you fill the board?
Thank you so much for your question, Mayor Taylor. I think one of the most important things is that the board really represents the community. And it, it, so many times, boards will be staffed with people from corporations or municipalities or people that can raise money. There's lots of ways to staff a board. That's why a third are always, a third of the board is always retained for residents, and then a third residents of the CLT, and then a third for the community that it serves. So I think those two pieces really ensure that the, the community control is what is always built into the CLT. And that's why they have a tendency to be so sustainable because people that are affected by, in our community, want to be part of this change.
Thank you. Are there any follow-up questions from council? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. How do, I've been a little bit of reading yesterday on land trusts, and my understanding is that the, the land trust allows the homeowner to build equity, but it keeps the land affordable for future limited-income buyers. How does it manage to do that?
Yes, thank you. I think that's a terrific question, and I think a lot of us wonder that. So the way the house, let's, let's look at a quick example of a single-family home that someone buys through a Community Land Trust. The land itself stays in the land trust, and the improvement is owned by that owner. And the way it stays affordable is that if it was affordable for an 80% AMI buyer, the, as the 80% AMI increases over time, the house will increase in value that much, but will always be affordable to somebody at an 80% AMI because it's increasing as the AMI increases for that AMI. So an example might be if I bought a Community Land Trust house for $300,000, and I'm an 80% AMI homebuyer, and in the 10 years I've had it, the AMI has gone up 25%, then I would have a 25% appreciation in the resale cost of that home. So I would get to recognize that. Plus, that one of the big things is you almost have that home as a savings account because you also get to count all the money you've paid down on your mortgage. You're getting back. And then any adjustment that would happen because you may have improved the value of that home by, by maintaining it or improving the quality of the home, that can also create appreciation for you as a homeowner. And when you're ready to buy into the open market, that's a, it's a, it's, it's something that we're training homeowners to do because your money would appreciate faster. This is really for housing for working families that aren't going to feel like they have a chance to buy into the open market. This is what provides a permanently sustainable, affordable home for families. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. And how does this compare to the BMR housing ownership?
Thank, thank you for asking that. I think that's a really important question. Currently, many BMR programs were kind of developed before RDA went away and had maybe a lot of internal staff to shepherd those programs. When that went away, a lot of those families became kind of, they really didn't know who to call when they needed someone, and they definitely didn't have the stewardship that they need to stay well housed over time. They, lots of those houses or lots of them turned over, especially during the foreclosure crisis, and they were lost to a portfolio. So some, some in the Bay Area, especially in Samathea County, some of those portfolios have decreased in half because of the, the lack of stewardship that it, that wasn't there when we lost staff that could, that could manage those. And I think the way CLT really prevents that from happening during a crisis like COVID or they have, so we're, we're providing stewardship to those families. They know, they know us. We've been doing home educate, homebuyer education classes. We've been learning to improve our credit scores. And that's something we've been doing together for a long time. And having that constant contact with the occupants really makes a big difference in their lives, also in the lives of their children, because they're also learning those really important homeownership aspects with, along with their folks. So they've grown up knowing them. So I think stewardship is, is probably one of the other big, big ways that they're different. The other one is that the subsidy, the houses always appreciate following the paycheck. So they're not going to appreciate faster than, than no additional subsidies needed because they're appreciating according to the AMI.
Right. This, this is Dev. If I may add something to that, Pam. In addition to the stewardship, where in the last great recession across the country, housing land, Community Land Trust had one-eighth of the foreclosure rate through stewardship. The other piece is that the BMRs in the past have closed the affordability gap with a silent second. And what happens in a cold market is a second is subordinate to the first, and so that's lost along with the unit. And in a hot market, the silent second, when it's recaptured, isn't enough to keep the home affordable at resale, so we have to resubsidize. In the Community Land Trust model, there is no silent second. Everything that is put into the home to close the gap between the appraised market value and what someone can afford on the paycheck is a front-loaded subsidy, and it's embedded into the unit, not given to the family. So the whole calculation of subsidy and the tie of the unit to the appraised market value is non-existent. And therefore, the model is self-sustaining because the only index is the paycheck, and it's completely divorced from any other index in the markets that we're accustomed to.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so I'm having trouble understanding context as it relates to the city. And so what I'm trying to, what I'd like to know is, does the city make a contribution in the purchase of the land and the homes? Is that what we do? Or do we allow Community Land Trust to operate within the city? Is there a certain minimum threshold level of homes to make up a Community Land Trust? I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand what the city's relationship is to this venture.
Thank you for asking. I think probably the most important thing to start out with is that the land trust is pretty flexible. We can work with developers who are building for-profit units to help them work with their inclusionary or public benefit piece so that that can come into the Community Land Trust. We can manage BMR units to, to make sure. So, so really, the Community Land Trust is just like an affordable housing developer, but we're a nonprofit and we're community-led, and there is no minimum that comes in. Sometimes jurisdictions will want a Community Land Trust that only deals in that city, or it could be regional or it could be statewide. There's lots of ways that Community Land Trusts can support that work. They can also bring projects for, to the city for in-lu fees is another way that it can be done. So there's kind of managing BMR, working with developers, bringing in lu fees, bringing new partnerships, helping corporate, corporations spend, be a better neighbor. Those are ways that a Community Land Trust can help, and there really is no minimum. It does help to get a, a Community Land Trust up and going with a small-capacity building. Grant is pretty common. Sometimes CDBG is used for that. But in areas like ours, we can also find philanthropic help for, for operational initially. But typically, the, the funds to run a CLT will not come from a city. They'll come from for-profit developers through inclusionary, through the closing of, of properties into a land trust. That's where the, the funding comes.
So does that mean the city makes a requirement that we want certain housing, certain inclusionary housing projects to fall within the CLT? Or, or, or within a project, a certain number of the, the units will fall within the CLT? Is that our role in relationship to the entity?
You don't have to do it that way. It could be a lot of different ways. Some developers may want to do their own, and some may want to work with the CLT. It's just another option. It's, it's one way that you can use a CLT to be quite successful. CLTs can also operate on their own. They can go out and find philanthropists and develop projects. It works better as a partnership with cities and developers and a, a natural way to shepherd BMR units as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, so just a question, David, and to the details. Since the sort of appreciation in theory of, of the house, if we're talking about a homeownership scenario, is, is, is limited, right? Is then there also, is, is the homeowner then sort of not incentivized or disincentivized from making too much improvement, right? Because, because there's always a cap in theory of, and it's, it's not the market cap of, of how much of that they can in theory, theory get back. And so is that a situation that, that you see with? And so is that a situation that, that you see with, with properties that, that are, you know, within the context of community land trust?
Thank you for asking that question. It's a, it's, it's a wonderful question. I think the, the homeowner is not disincentivized, but they, they do need to, they need to request from the CLT permission to do something over a certain amount, a certain dollar amount, so that they don't, so that that house isn't appreciating out of that income bracket. Because what you don't want to do is not have it be affordable to the next working family that needs that home. So what we're finding is that the families, they get a 10% bonus as part of the incentive to keep it in wonderful shape and work. So typically, we were able to connect them, a CLT is able to connect a homeowner with a lot of resources, maybe for free solar or different programs that they might need. But typically, they're responsible for keeping that home in good shape and do. And they recognize as part of the stewardship that they're passing that asset on to another family in the future. And that's really a remarkable way to have one family help the next family. So we haven't seen that in the community land trust world. We have seen that a little bit in markets where, where there might be a pool of money to do repairs. Sometimes people will stop doing their own repairs. But the way that we work with our families is really through strong housing counseling and stewardship so that they are keeping their homes in good shape. Thank you for asking.
Yeah, one quick follow-up. And what generally is the, the tenure, the length of the, the average tenure of, of, and again, in the homeownership or ownership situation of people in, in sort of community land trust property? And is it generally the idea, because I know you mentioned a couple of times in, in the presentation, and thank you for the presentation, of, of people sort of transitioning into the open market? Is, is that sort of the, the, the end goal? Or is it that essentially people would, in theory, stay in community land trust properties for, for the duration of their lives?
It really depends on the family. So many of us will, will, our, our lives are different from each other and we'll go through different stages. But typically, a homeowner is a homeowner for a long time. They're not going to transition out, especially in our area where it's hard to buy into the open market. So many of us are, are kind of excluded from that market in general. But because the community land trust is here and can do other development work, families can now count ADU or accessory dwelling unit income as part of the income to qualify. Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac accept that so they can count 75% of the rental income. And you can now have two rental units on every single family home based on the new ADU laws, which allows a different level of homeowner to start to become a landlord and be able to buy in. So we do a lot of education and continuing education with families on improving their credit scores, becoming mortgage-ready. Even if they have a stable place to live, they may want to buy into the open market because they will appreciate faster. And I think a lot of people are incentivized to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. So in the scenario that you were just talking about, where you, someone would have a home and then possibly be able to add two ADUs, who would be paying and developing those two ADUs? Is that something where it's just as though the person is a, it's for, just like with any other homeowner? Or is there something unique in this situation? And then how does it, how was the equity handled at the other end? You said 75% goes to the homeowner.
Sorry. Thanks for asking that question. I think clarifying questions really help a lot. What I meant to say was 75% of the rental income can go towards the qualifying income of the homeowner. They get, if somebody's building a unit in their backyard, they get the benefit of that. I think it's a little bit more complicated on CLT land to develop an ADU. What I was referring to is that community nonprofit organizations can buy a single family home, develop two units of ADU, and then have that available. So families like Community Land Trust families can purchase that. They're qualified because they've gotten their, their credit scores up, their debt ratios are very low, and they may not carry debt, which makes them qualify for a larger amount when they go to buy. So these are just other ways that a community land trust can also help people become homeowners out in the appreciating market. CLTs really focus on just maintaining the housing stock that's there and shepherding those families. If those families want help moving out of that unit and into the market, we're here to help them regardless of their goal and whatever stage of life they're in. So many of us are maybe have, have gotten older over time, surprising, and families have moved out and we might be living alone, maybe don't need a three-bedroom, two-bath home. So, so the CLT is there to shepherd that family through their lifetime, regardless of what their needs are and whatever stage they're in. So we're here to support them in, in, in what, in what works for them.
Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. I was wondering if staff had any comments as to how they envisioned us thinking about the CLTs or if we want to do that at another time.
Hi, Judy. We're the Development Director for Housing. Thank you for that. Getting your way for funding requests in the near future. In fact, Lana is coming to potentially come forward with.
We're having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, I'm having my, my section is going in and out. Hopefully, you'll be able to hear me now. Yeah, so I'm not sure what you start back with. That there's the community land trust. We could come to the city council and request BMR funds to acquire as one example and convert, for conversion to deed-restricted affordable rental housing. There's been some discussion at the Housing Commission through the development of their work plan and through other efforts that they might like to support and make a recommendation to city council for different housing programs that would support residents, including programs that would provide foreclosure prevention. So especially now with COVID and some of the impacts on some of the owners in the city, they may have some trouble meeting their mortgage obligations. And so the Housing Commission is, is thinking through some different ideas that they might move forward to council. Those are a few examples of near-term ideas.
Thank you. That was really helpful.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. And Judy just informed me that we did have a public comment on this item, and it's one person. So Ms. Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, I will be opening the mic for Kevin Gallagher. Kevin, you're off mute if you would like to address the city council at this time.
Hi. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I don't have anything particularly nuanced to say. I generally just wanted to express appreciation for the, the conversation. I personally don't know a ton about CLTs, so it was nice to learn a little bit more. I, I work in housing and rental subsidy program, so I'm very familiar with those. And, you know, I work with folks who are in BMRs and rent-controlled units. And, and those things are all great, but they obviously all have, you know, complicated effects just on housing affordability and, you know, housing markets in general. And my experience in housing has been that there aren't necessarily a lot of exciting, creative ideas regarding affordable housing. And community land trusts for me are, are one of those few exciting, creative ideas. So I really hope that this is something that we can continue to discuss and figure out how the city can best support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the team on the presentation we just saw? Okay, well, thank you for your presentation on the community land trust. And we look forward to hearing additional information in the future from staff.
Thanks for having us.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on polit, policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. Item D1, adopt a resolution number 6585, authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the professional service agreement with Tim Sheper, Inc. to extend the term of the Bell Haven Pool operations. Updated from our, this was actually an item continued from September 8th. And to introduce this item is our library and community services director, Mr. Sean Reinhardt.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a moment while I get, I get a presentation on the screen here. It's been a little while since I've used GoToMeeting for this, so bear with me. Great, so just a brief presentation on this item. Thank you very much for taking the time to consider it. This is an amendment to the professional services agreement for the Bell Haven Pool. I'm sorry, I think I'm having presentation issues here. So the recommendation is to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the amendment to the professional services agreement with Team Sheper, Inc., the operator of the pool. This is to continue the services at the Bell Haven Pool until the overall agreement expires in August of 2021 or until construction commences at the Anette Harris Community Center, whichever occurs first. And I believe there's another item on the agenda tonight about the Anette Harris Community Center construction-related project. So the current agreement with Team Sheper has the Bell Haven, Bell Haven Pool operations ending on October 1st, so next month. That's because the original construction project timeline estimated the start of construction taking place this summer. COVID-19 and the pandemic and everything really set that timeline on a different path. And I think we're going to be hearing about that in another item later tonight. But essentially, what's needed, I'm getting a note here that my presentation is maybe not visible. Are you able to see this presentation, folks? Okay, so I guess that was a distraction. Sorry about that.
Mr. Reinhardt, I think it's because it's not full size.
Okay, let's see here.
That's probably why you got the, the note.
How's that? Thank you so much. It's a, it's a little discombobulating because I can't see the webcams. So as I was saying, the current agreement actually has the.
Just one moment, Mr. Reinhardt. The problem now is that part of the slide isn't visible. So maybe that's why. This way is better.
This way works. Really sorry about that. It's been a while since I've done a presentation on GoToMeeting. So the current agreement with Team Sheper actually has the Bell Haven Pool ceasing operations on October 1st. And so this amendment would simply extend the current agreement for them to operate Bell Haven Pool through the overall end of the agreement, which is August 31st, 2021, or when construction commences at the Anette Harris Community Center, whichever occurs first. That's the gist of it. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I believe Tim Sheper and Steve Young from Team Sheper also are available in case you have technical questions for them.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. At this time, I will take public comment. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our current item, which is D1, the amendment to the Tim Sheper agreement for the Bell Haven Pool operations, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the city council at this time. So a last call for any public comment on D1 regarding the amendment with Team Sheper for the Bell Haven Pool. Okay, so public commenter is Julie Shanson. Julie, you're off mute if you'd like to address the city council at this time.
Hi, I just wanted to check in about the pool because I know that it's operating under limited capacity because of all the COVID-19 restrictions. And I was, I'm concerned that the people who are using the pool are not necessarily the people who live around the pool. So even when you go to make a reservation at the pool, you have to have a smartphone and you have to pony up either $10 or $40. And there isn't a provision to say you're a resident or not. Just some thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So final call on public comment for item D1 regarding the Tim Sheper amendment for the Bell Haven Pool. Seeing no further hands raised. Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And thank you for your public comment, Ms. Shanson. Mr. Reinhardt, I have a, a couple of questions. And just a follow-up on the app to find out if the app was fixed. There's two different apps, one for the Burgess Pool and one for the Bell Haven Pool. And there were some challenges with the one for the Bell Haven Pool.
Yes, thank you for that question. I know that's been kind of an ongoing technical issue. My understanding is there's actually one mobile app and you could reserve at the different locations, like lane times and things like that. And one of the challenges, I guess, technically speaking, was that the, the Bell Haven appointments weren't loading properly. And there'd been some ongoing back and forth between the city and the provider, being Team Sheper, and then Team Sheper with their app platform to try to fix it. They reported shortly after last week's meeting that they had worked with the app platform provider in a back-and-forth intensive technical support call lasting several hours and got that issue resolved. Had been testing it since, let's see, Friday before last. And as of Tuesday, Wednesday last week, they informed me about that. I went in and had a look at the app. It did look like I could load all of the, all the lane times seemed to be there. And, and they corresponded to the lane times you would find when you go to the desktop version of the, of the website to reserve them. So it does appear to be working, at least from my experience and from what Steve Young and Tim Sheper have reported. But I think I'd heard that it, maybe that hasn't been universal, that maybe some folks were still having issues with the app. I know that I did have to update the app to get those to load properly. So maybe that's an additional technical issue that's there. But that's kind of where it stands right now.
Thank you. And a couple other items, and that is, just based on the public comment, is there a way to prioritize access to residents first to, actually for both pools?
Well, I would imagine that there's always a way. I think it's a question of working with the provider and getting direction from the city council of, of how to do that. One of the ways it's typically done is to charge different fees, whether one's a resident or a non-resident. That's pretty common in parks and recreation. So it's certainly something that we can, we can work with the provider on if that's council's desire, that we kind of place that priority.
My other question, I would actually like to see that as a part of the amendment. And the second is a comprehensive outreach. That would be, for me, that would go along with the DA for the Bell Haven Pool, that there would be outreach. And it can be a combination of, of email, actually a flyer, and then signage to encourage more usage because just looking at the number of users of the pool, the majority, it looks like, are, are not residents. And so how do you, I would like to see the majority of people that use the pool as being residents. And of course, that there's visitors as well. But just looking for some creative ways to change the outcome.
Those are great comments and questions. Regarding the development agreement, I'm not 100% conversant on the details of the development agreement that is the source of those funds and whether it stipulates any particular form of outreach or not. I don't think it does, but that, that's a question I would have to follow up with either the assistant city manager or the deputy city manager about. But to your point of, of working that into this particular amendment, I think that absolutely can be done, I think. But getting it done by October 1st may not be possible just because of the amount of legal review. legal review and back and forth that might have to happen in that negotiation. So I would recommend that we, that the city council consider extending the timeframe of the amendment so we don't have a service interruption on October 1st, which is just a couple of weeks away, but direct the staff to negotiate whatever terms that the city council desires to be added to the base amendment and give us a little bit of time to work those details out with Team Sheper, and we can bring them back to the council the next opportunity. But just, I'm a little concerned that we might not be able to get that done by October 1st.
Well, I'm comfortable with extending the contract past October 1st as long as these two items are included. And also, there's supposed to be a weekly report of usage, and I'm just, I wanted to know where we can find that information.
We have been receiving that information, and we're happy to transmit it to council. We also have mapped the users of the pool using our GIS system. Our GIS technicians putting the finishing touches on that. That should be available relatively soon here, within the next week or so. So perhaps we can bring that back in a form that this, I'll work with the city manager and determine what forms the best way to get that information to the council.
Thank you. Are there any follow-up questions for Mr. Reinhardt? Councilmember Nash?
Hi, yes. So I had not been able to get the Bell Haven app to work. And I just, based on your information, deleted the app and then re-downloaded it, and it does work now. However, I then tried to do Burgess, and that one no longer works. So it seems like one or the other. And I don't know if there's any explanation for it because it would be really nice if they both work at the same time and you can, it still takes two tabs on the app, but it would be nice if one could still toggle between the two. So
Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I'll follow up with Team Sheper. I'm looking, I'm looking at my phone right now trying to pull up the Burgess Lanes. But we could definitely work on that technical issue offline. I am able to see some lanes here at Burgess, so maybe we can work offline and try to get that connected for you.
Thank you. And I'll try it again because, and I guess one suggestion would be to make sure that people are aware to, that they need to download, re-delete the app and download it again because it looks, if you don't know to do that, it looks like it's not working. So I actually had a different question, and that's, it says that the city is responsible for baseline maintenance. What does that include?
You know, I'd have to defer to our recreation supervisor Todd Zeo on the details and possibly Brian Henry, the facilities manager. But I think it's mainly just the maintenance of the physical facility itself. For example, replacing the roof, the pool deck, fall within like the city's purview. Whereas replacing chemicals and minor repairs of, you know, broken fixtures and things like that with Sheper in general.
So I guess specifically what I'm wondering is, who maintains the pool water quality and does the chemicals testing on a regular basis? And then also, who is responsible for cleaning the debris from the bottom of the pools?
Yeah, all of that type of maintenance, that day-to-day maintenance falls with Team Sheper.
Okay, those have been issues. And the water quality has been resolved. The debris on the bottom of the pool is still somewhat of an issue.
Thank you for bringing it to my attention. I'll definitely follow up with them. Our maintenance, our maintenance worker, Mr. Olson, works pretty closely with them to make sure that they stay on top of those things. But it's always beneficial to hear additional input from users and others to make sure that we keep it to the very best quality.
Okay, it is a regular issue with the pool. The Burgess Pool, I have not been to the Bell Haven Pool in a month or so. Another question is, what are the hours of operation of each pool? Is when we see the data, it would be beneficial to, I guess, a couple of things. One is the Burgess Pool right now, both the instructional and performance pool are lumped together. My experience is that the performance pool is overbooked and the instructional pool often has times available. And so I'm wondering if we could get those separated out and also just know what the general the hours of operation for each pool is, will be beneficial for being able to look at the data. But at this point, it looks like Bell Haven Pool is very well-used, as is Burgess. But essentially, when we're looking at the data that was provided by the city, it's difficult to compare because Bell Haven has six lanes available, whereas Burgess has 17, if you count both pools. And so when we're looking just straight at user numbers, it's very different situations.
Those are all great questions. A lot of them really are kind of technical that really the operator would be best positioned to respond to like the hours of operation and how they sort of portray those. I believe that the owner, Tim Sheper, is present this evening. I think he can answer some of those questions for you. Definitely in much better detail and more accuracy than I could. So I'll call on Judy to see if maybe she could call Mr. Sheper forward or possibly his associate, Steve Young. I believe both of them are on this meeting in case there were questions of this nature.
Thank you.
Yes, so at this time, Tim Sheper, I have unmuted you. If you'd like to unmute yourself. And the same is true for Mr. Steve Young. You guys are both off-mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Yes, good evening. This is Tim Sheper speaking. And I believe the question raised was the hours of operation at Burgess Pool and Bell Haven. So the hours of operation are 6:00 AM at Burgess. We open up and we're closing at 8:00 PM. And that's for Monday through Friday. And then it's 6:00 PM till, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM on the weekends at Burgess. But then Bell Haven, we are opening at 6:00 PM, 6:00 AM, and then closing at, I believe it is 8:00, 8:00 PM as well, and then 6:00, 6:00 PM on the weekends. Does that, does that answer the question that you had?
Yes, thank you. Actually, I will take this offline and discuss it separately. Thank you.
Are there any follow-up questions on this item? No, okay. So would anybody like to make a motion? And there were these two items that I was interested in. Adding to the contract, and one is how to prioritize access to residents in Menlo Park. And the second is comprehensive outreach in the Bell Haven neighborhood. Councilmember Mueller?
Do you think, I'm just curious, that the outreach to residents in the Bell Haven neighborhood should fall upon the contract, or is that something that the city should be doing?
Well, just, and the reason I brought up the DA, the development agreement, is because the, from my understanding, it's, the pool is supposed to be open to give access to the neighborhood. And so the outreach, for me, it would make sense for it to be the pool operator. So it would make sense to have the pool operator do the outreach unless there, unless there were something that the city thought that they could do that would be more comprehensive than the pool service provider.
Yeah, I mean, Mayor, I would, I would think that the city is probably better situated to do outreach to residents than the pool provider. In my memory, the DA is that the development agreement provided money for the operations of the pool. It allows it to be operated with staff. But I'm not sure, I think that, I think that we may want to focus, make sure that we have the, the developed, the pool operator focusing on operating that pool at its best and highest potential for those residents and that the city would take on the burden of telling community, hey, you come use it. Come, come get in this pool like we, and as we reach out to them with other programs, hopefully that we would have. But that would be, I just, that would, I, that would be anything beyond like doing the website or things like that. I think the city probably more strongly situated to tell our residents. But that would just be my take on it. I can understand where you're coming from.
I appreciate your input. Councilmember Carlton?
Sure. I could go either way on that. I inherently agree with Councilmember Mueller. My only concern is spending city resources that would help a specific business or contractor and how that might be perceived. Unless it was just generally come use the facilities at the, at the center, if you see what I'm saying. Just, just a concern that I brought up that came to mind. Also, I'm worried about staff being overburdened as it is.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, Mr., I didn't know if Mr. Reinhardt was going to say something.
After you, Councilmember. I'll chime in whenever.
Cool. So, you know, I can be supportive of, I tend to agree, I don't know when we say outreach on the part of the, you know, the operator. I mean, I don't know exactly like how that looks like, and if it hasn't specifically been a part of the agreement to this point, I don't know. As we look to sort of add these few months on to the, the pool is no longer accessible. I don't know like the value, but, but I am supportive of a sense of like giving staff the direction of like, you know, adding to a city newsletter or adding to some email blast that they do, additional information sort of about the pool to make sure that we're engaging residents as much as possible. Again, I could also be supportive of the exploration of some sort of prioritization of, of residents. I would not want to mix that in at this moment with the extension of, of this, this agreement, which ends on October 1st, right? Because I just don't know, that comes with lots of complexity. Is it, is it sort of, you know, reserving certain days for residents, right? Is it reserving certain lanes for residents? Is it, is it, and is it, you know, different pricing points? I mean, this whole residence preference can go a lot of different ways, and there are legal implications that come into play. And so I think that there are lots of sensitivities there, which I don't know that I would want to burden with, with the extension of this agreement, but the extent to which there is council support for that, I'm, I'm more than willing to explore like how that looks going forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I'm willing to explore going forward too. The thing that I remember about, about the pool is that there already is some preference, and I don't know if it's in the apps because I haven't looked at the apps. But there already was some preference for residents in terms of pricing. If you were a Menlo Park resident, your price to use the pool is cheaper than if you weren't. Trying to, I, I think that as we, I think that this is a great term sheet, a term to highlight as we look into going into a full negotiation of the next, that next contract. But I think that for right now, probably it would be best to use that time period to explore it with the, with the vendor, and then sit down, brainstorm it, figure out what works, and then, and then tweak it. So, but I think it's fair. I mean, we already tried to do that in pricing before, but now, interestingly, in the time of COVID, that disparity between those who have more money in their pocket and those who have less is greater. And so people can out-compete for finite resources. So we have to, I think it makes sense that we have to figure out a way to adjust that.
Councilmember Nash?
So a couple of comments. One is there is no longer, all residents and non-residents are $10 a swim. And so there's no longer a distinction under the COVID implementation at, at the moment. One of the things which I think as far as I know, there can't, there is no workaround at this point. It's too difficult with the app. But the lanes open up at midnight, and so it's, they're often, some of the more desirable times are filled up within the first hour. And it's depending when residents want to swim, it may be, that may be one of the issues just that exists. I don't know that there's any workaround for it at this point. But just to realize that. I wonder if Team Sheper actually has the email addresses to, or if we would be able to provide them to, to promote the pool to the Bell Haven residents as such, or whether that's some, if that's a limitation where only the city could actually do that promotion because of the email list?
I could speak to that. That's second part, which I think was actually a question for me. And I was going to bring in on this because a couple of the council members commented on should the city do outreach or not. And I think the answer is we certainly can help do outreach. The Library and Community Services Department weekly puts out an email newsletter that just talks about, you know, in general, the recreation and library services available to the community, including classes that are provided by third-party contractors, you know, the sports and other things that are happening out there. So we absolutely could do that, and I think it would be more appropriate for the city to email the city's list directly rather than share that list with the third-party operator. So in that case, if the desire is to send outreach in the form of emails or phone calls or whatever it may be to Menlo Park residents, the city has the capability to do that. So we can do that for sure.
Mr. Reinhardt, just for clarity, my intentions are around the comprehensive outreach has to do with increasing the usage of the pool of residents. And since the lowest number of residents using the pool is at the Bell Haven is the reason why that's where my focus is at the moment, but just looking at how do we do that? And for me, I'm thinking the simplest way is more outreach. And Councilmember Nash, you had your hand up.
Yes, well, I actually wanted to take this opportunity to do a shout-out to Steve of Team Sheper, who has done an awesome job in, with the air quality of notifying people about this, when the pool is open and when it isn't. And with an incredible, just friendly, lighthearted approach, it's been a really, it's been a pleasure to read the emails, and they've been very timely.
Mr. Reinhardt, did you have any other recommendations, suggestions on how to move forward based on the concerns, or at least the concerns that you've heard?
Sure, all valid concerns. And I think there's path forward on all of them. I think really, or from the staff's perspective, just operationally, it's just the ticking clock as far as a legal mechanism for services to continue at the Bell Haven Pool past October 1st. I think a couple of council members sort of alluded to, so I think a couple of council members sort of alluded to, so the complexity of working in like resident preferences and outreach strategies. Into a legal document like this. And I just want to caution the council, I'm not sure that's achievable by October 1st. But we can include a mechanism in the amendment that says. This amendment will go into effect with the understanding that those plans will be renegotiated and, and. And added to another amendment within some specified time period. Just so that the operator can continue to provide access. To the pool October 1st, so that, that's, that would be the recommendation from the staff's perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Vice Mayor Combs.
Okay, so I'm, I'm happy to try to formulate a motion and then we can see. Whether there's a second and whether there's three votes. And, and then that'll, that'll, that'll frame the, the discussion going forward. And so my motion would be, you know, to. Per the, the staff report and staff recommendation, adopt resolution 6585. Authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the professional services agreement with Team Sheeper, Inc. To extend the term of the Bell Haven Pool operations and so. And the motion would also include. You know, additional sort of instruction to staff to explore. Outreach with regards to the Bell Haven. Pool specifically and that the Bell Haven community. And this is to, to staff. And, and also for, for staff to. As bandwidth and time allows to, to explore. Some resident preference. But those things are, those two addendums to. The resident, to the, our, our sort of exploration and, and not, and not in my motion, not linked. Or, and so, so that, that would be, that would be my motion.
Councilmember Nash, are you seconding the motion? Are you?
Well, actually, I just wanted to say something. I will second the motion. I would ask for a friendly amendment. To actually go beyond exploring the outreach with staff to saying that staff will. Or requesting that staff do the outreach, which it sounds like it really would not be that difficult to include it in a letter. To, and really try and focus that, but, and then. I just want to say I'm, I'm. Somewhat. Challenge just, I, I do think, yes, I will discuss in the next section that we do need to do something about. Improving the number of residents that are using the pools in the Bell Haven from the. From the statistics that have been provided, which is three weeks. To council, it looks like we've got about a two to one. Non-residents to residents using the pool. And so I believe that the development agreement actually is to encourage. Bell Haven residents specifically to use the pool, and that seems like. We need to work a little bit harder as a city to make that happen and be true to the development agreement. But having said that, I will second the motion.
And, and I'm okay with the friendly amendment of, of sort of staff actually doing some sort of email outreach. With, with regards to, to, to the Bell Haven Pool. That, that's fine.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. So. The motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Combs, second by City Councilmember Nash, is to adopt resolution 6585. Authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the professional services agreement with Team Sheeper Incorporated. To extend the term of the Bell Haven Pool operations. Direct staff to conduct outreach in the Bell Haven community for the Bell Haven Pool and for staff to explore resident preference. So any further questions or comments from the city council? Seeing none by roll call, sorry.
Sorry, I was just going to specifically ask Mayor Taylor to see if there was anything. How this works. If you don't mind.
I'm, I'm comfortable with how things are to limit the complications. Or the complexity, actually, not complications.
Thank you. So by roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton.
Hi.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
Councilmember Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I, I really appreciate your input on this item and helping to move it forward. The next item on the agenda for regular business is item D2. Consider the term, term sheet and conceptual, conceptual design and project review process. Of the Facebook's offer to rebuild the community center facilities located at 100 to 110 Terminal Avenue. And for this item, we have one council member that is recused, Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, thanks, and I'll chime in here, here now. Our, our new city protocol is that when a council member is recused. That, that person states explicitly why they are recused, and so I'm recused from this matter because Facebook is my employer. So, so I will, I will, I will turn off my, my camera and return when we get to the, the next matter. Right, Judy? Or did, did I do, did I do it right, or did I mess it up some?
That was perfect, and I appreciate your memory just to disengage the camera and the microphone, and I will alert you when you can return. Thank you.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Thank you. And for this item, to introduce it is our deputy city manager, Justin Murphy.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Taylor and City Council. My name is Justin Murphy. I'm the city's deputy city manager. So I'm going to give a brief presentation recapping the staff report that was released last week in English and Spanish. My version tonight will just be in English. And then we will have a presentation by Facebook. And then it will come back to me for the staff recommendation for this evening and then turn back over to the council. So with that, if that works for you, I will then start sharing my screen. Great. If you can just let me know once you see my screen.
Yes, we can see it.
Great, good. So. Let's see, so for, for tonight's agenda topic, we are looking for council direction on a few. Items related to the term sheets, the conceptual design and pool demolition. And then project schedule and a review process. So those are the three things that we'll be. Looking at this evening to force some council input and direction. So to start, I'm just going to do, try to do a quick recap of where we've been over just about the past year. The last October 2019, almost a year ago. Facebook made an announcement that they wanted to make a major investment in the city of Menlo Park. In the form of rebuilt community facilities, and they wanted to do that by partnering with the community and the city. And being actively involved in the design and construction of new facilities to be located. 100 Terminal Avenue in the Bell Haven neighborhood of Menlo Park. In December, Facebook then followed up with a detailed offer letter for the council's consideration. And then in January, the council considered that offer and adopted a resolution of intent that kind of created a bit of a roadmap for us. In terms of how to go about reviewing the proposal. In February 9th, there was a second community meeting, and that was the last time that there was a, a large gathering of, of people specific to this project. A lot of great input at that point in time. Then in, in February, there's council direction on interim services, which is a very important topic for what, what would. Happen to the services while buildings were demolished and new, under construction. And then March hit with the state and local emergency, the, the pandemic. It's part of that pretty early in the process. The council did. Revisit some of its priorities and did reaffirm that this, this project was a top priority for the, for the city and staff to, to pursue. The best way that we could through the pandemic with, with a lot of that meanings, virtual, virtual meetings. Then at the end of April, we did ask the council to, to weigh in on the draft plan for interim services. Got some buy-in on that with the understanding that. Need to do some additional outreach, which, and there were some other. Their milestones and info items along the way, but I'll focus it on July 28th. As when the council approved funding for the base level project, kind of the city obligations, and I'll go through some of those later slide. Then most recently, last Thursday, the city hosted a telephone town hall meeting as a way of. Reintroducing this project to everybody, make sure that there's. Good familiarity with tonight's council agenda item and what, what we're collectively looking to do over the next few months. So all along this process, there's been two critical. Members of the city council, Mayor Taylor and Councilmember Carlton, that have participated in quite a few subcommittee meetings. This service, a check-in for staff as we. Embark on this, so we've progressed along this journey. So kudos to them for participating in quite a few meetings to date. So let's see, so now I'm just going to go through the, the three basic topics that were outlined in the staff reports. The first is the term sheet. So the, the term sheet is a summary document. It's meant to be a guide. In terms of the process and pursuing a detailed construction agreement that would be. Binding between the city of Menlo Park and Facebook. So the term sheet is unenforceable. It's meant to be a, a continued in. In the spectrum of a good faith effort to outline expectations, next steps, make sure that this is. This project is set up for success. So it's a, it's a three-page document, which will be much easier for people to digest than the, the detailed legal agreement later on. So it's a, it's a good tool, and tonight's a check-in to make sure we're on the right track. And then at the point in time that there's an approved projects, we're still a number of months away from having an approved project. But at the point of having an approved project, that would be a legally binding agreement between Facebook and the city. So in the staff report, we did kind of highlight the section three of the term sheet, which is the city requested work. And I, and this slide summarizing them into four basic categories. So one major topic for discussion tonight is the, the pool. Another item is going to be. Somewhat discreet is whether to pursue an upgrade to the structural design of the building to accommodate a. Keep open the opportunity to, to design the building in a way that meets a Red Cross evacuation center requirement. And there's a number of sustainability and resiliency requirements that are pretty intertwined that we're, we're. Analyzing in quite deep detail right now. And then there's a few items related to utilities. So. Attached, just to kind of remind people in terms of the scope of the project. It's replacing existing facilities that exist on the site plus incorporation of a new branch library. So just to recount the existing buildings, it's the Annetta Harris Community Center, the Menlo Park Senior Center. The Bell Haven Youth Center, which is, provides after-school care, the Bell Haven Pool. And then the Branch Library, which is currently located in the Bell Havens. School would be relocated and incorporated into this new facility. So the design that's. For which there's an illustrative site plan that was attached to the staff report, and you'll see some imagery. Shortly is a, is a new two-story building on the. Footprint of the existing senior center in a parking lot. There would be a new parking lot constructed as part of this, which would consolidate the parking to kind of make it more. Easier for people to, to locate parking spaces. As part of this design. There's imagery for reconfigured pool in the same general location. So this is consistent with the council direction back in January to pursue. Designs for, for a new pool. By building a new pool, by pursuing that design. It provides an opportunity to. Reconcile a number of the existing grades or the elevations of the facilities. Into a single uniform grade that would be. More accessible to participants. So that the plan that is presented to you this evening does necessitate the demolition of the existing pool. There've been various iterations of designs that. At one point may have been able to kind of work around the existing pool as a. Fallback, the latest design that Facebook and the city believes meets the community needs. Does involve demolition of the existing pool. So that's kind of a key topic that we do want council input on. That, that could affect the overall project schedule. So it's a, it's an important item for us to bring to the entire council. So there's a number of budget considerations. First off, the value of Facebook's offers, it's tens of millions of dollars that if. Facebook weren't offering to make this donation, then it'd be city requirements to, to come up with the funds. So it's quite a substantial offer. That definitely looking forward to, want to be able to take advantage of. With that, though, come some city obligations, and, and the good news is for the base level commitments that include certain soft costs. Fixtures, furniture fixtures and equipment, staff time. The interim services that we talked about previously, those items plus a water main replacement. Have, have been funded by the council based off our best estimates of, of project costs. So that, that was the action that the council took on July 28th. To, to fund those commitments from various funding sources. The remaining items, what is the, and those total approximately $6 million. The pool replacement is one of the remaining items are the estimates for a complete pool replacement are $7.4 million. We are not looking for the funding for that tonight, but we are providing this context for what the overall. Budget considerations are. So the pool replacement would be 7.4 million. And there's other potential project enhancements that, as I said, are still in the works, are still working through. The interrelatedness and making sure we're not double counting anything or undercounting anything. So. But for purposes of this staff report, we provided the council with an estimate of $3 to $4 million. So we would like to come back to the council on October 13th with the more detailed cost estimates. And since this would be a. Fully a city obligation, we believe that. That all five council members would be able to participate in that discussion. So. We are looking for October 13th to be the time that we really focus in on the budget considerations. And again, so just provide the context in terms of funding sources. For the, the remaining approximately $10 to $11 million of obligation, of possibilities. Would be, one option would be the Measure T Recreation Bonds, which the voters approved, Menlo Park residents approved in 2001. There's about $14 million worth of. Funding. Available that would require council action to pursue that. There's at least a six-month lead time of getting those funds. So if the council did want to pursue Measure T Bonds, we would need direction by January of 2021 to stay on track for that. Based off the current budget situation, some of the other funds are, are pretty restricted. There's. A little over $2 million of unassigned fund balance available. There may be a number of other competing needs or interests for, for those funds. And then we left the other item of, of other in terms of if there are other options, possibilities, happy to. Explore, explore those. These are just context for this evening. There's no direct budget decision that we're looking for this evening. So then the third component of what we're asking the council to weigh in on is just. The next steps in the project review process. And so the first one being a planning commission study session to go through the detailed. Design that Facebook would. design that Facebook would be submitting shortly. And we would really encourage members of the public to tune in and participate in that that meeting. So October 5th, and then the next item listed is October 13th. I mentioned looking for council direction on the additional city requested work. And then we would target October 27th for final council approval of interim services. And then the remaining steps would be a planning commission, public hearing on the recommendation on the entire project. And then council action in January. So if if we're able to keep to that schedule, then this is what the expectations would be in terms of impacts to facilities. So right now, a number of the facilities that we're talking about are currently closed due to COVID-19. And the in terms of when they may open, we don't know, but there is the possibility that that facilities could reopen, say in the in the springtime. But if the project were approved and we were to move forward, then we would we would be looking for facility closures in in around June of 2021. And there'd be a period of remediation, demolition of buildings, and then a goal of being able to reopen the new facilities in spring of 2023. And so the the timeframe for construction is approximately 18 to 24 months. So with that, I would like to turn it over to to Fergus O'Shea from Facebook. And then when he is done, I'll come back and sorry, I'm going to go pull up the other presentation for Fergus. So if we bear with me for one second, I'll turn off my camera and get his presentation up.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, and welcome, Mr. O'Shea.
Thank you very much. Justin, most of the the presentation is for for Aaron, who's going to come in a little bit after me. But good evening, council members, Mayor Taylor, Sam Frose, the sham director of facilities for Facebook for Menlo Park. It's good to see you all, and I hope you're all keeping safe and your families are keeping safe through these times. So tonight, we're going to give just a brief overview of the of where the project is at, and really decide plan to give you a frame of reference for discussion around the pool. Back in December, you know, we outlined what the process looked like to initial phase one. Part of that process involved a series of public meetings. We had some really great public meetings in the first half of the year. And those meetings have really deformed this the site plan and design we're going to show you tonight. You know, we had hoped to be at a position this summer where we were in front of you, trying to get a full project approval, obviously with COVID and everything else happening. That's obviously been pushed out. And I think Justin, there's going to do kind of the job of identifying what the new project timeline is. But in terms of the overall project, you know, we're we're committed to the project. We want to move things along. I'm excited to next month, get in front of the planning commission, where we're going into a lot more detail in terms of the design and getting their input. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Aaron. Aaron is going to give you an overview of the of the updated site plan and design, and I'll be here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Shea, and welcome, Mr. Ashley.
Thanks for having me tonight.
Mr. Ashley, we're having difficulty hearing you.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. I spend my entire life on Zoom, Blue Jeans, and every other app except for this one. And so I thought I was up to speed. My apologies. Anyway, my name's Aaron Ashley. I'm managing principal of Hart Howerton. We're a design firm here in the Bay Area elsewhere. Excited to be back in front of you. Sorry for the delay. It's been, it seems like a long time since we were in front of you all in the community. But we've remained engaged with Facebook and city staff and thinking about this project and working hard to get back in front of you. So thanks for your patience. Certainly been a lot going on in the world. So what we wanted to just share with you briefly tonight was a little context around the decision that Justin Murphy put in front of you regarding the pool. So Justin, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. Effectively, a big, you know, the the discussion we all had as a group and with the community last winter centered around replacing two significant buildings along with another building that supports the pool and a building that the youth centers currently have been with a new building of some kind that would contain the five programs that were envisioned for this center. So community center uses, senior center uses, library uses both for adults and children and youth center uses and fitness slash pool uses. And so it was always understood, at least in the Facebook proposal and all the discussions we've had with with the community that that these uses lived well under one roof. And the location of the building was really considered around a number of things that that exist on the site today. And so I don't believe my pointer works, but on the right hand side, obviously, you have the Beechwood School, and they have use of the parking lots during the week. Obviously, very busy in the mornings. And so we've met with Beechwood multiple times and kind of taken their input around how drop off for kids could be safe in the morning. We've thought about the existing redwood trees and some horticulture work has been done with to understand that those trees inside the red circles are healthy and should be retained. We've thought about how you arrive to this place in a very clear, safe, easy to use parking lot where you can pick up, drop off, find a place to park, get into the building safely. And it's really sort of all in one place as opposed to where it is today, and you kind of work your way around. A very central, easy to find entry to this new building. And then that's where it gets interesting. And maybe, Justin, if you could go to the next slide, where these uses all really do work well together under one roof, but they don't always work well together next to each other. You could imagine 10 a.m. on a on a Tuesday, when the children's library is full of noisy kids like mine and senior center is at full capacity, and those two uses have some acoustic separations that want to be maintained. But but there is great efficiency for operations and for kind of the experience of the community of all these things being under one roof. And so we've worked through the input that we got from the community, which was actually incredibly specific and far ranging. And what we learned is that there are a lot of uses that want to be on the ground floor. You know, how do I manage strollers when I go to the children's library? How do I, as a senior, kind of get in and use this place effectively without having to go up and down stairs? How do I move from inside to outside when the weather's nice and I can take advantage of of kind of the great Menlo Park weather? And certainly things like basketball gyms do better on the ground floor. And so one of the things we learned through this process was what, that the majority of the uses do want to be on the ground floor. And that includes new locker rooms that would replace what's there today. And those locker rooms would be centrally located between the swimming component, the basketball component, or the kind of just all the fitness uses that could be done there. And then what we've been able to push upstairs, and I'll show you in a minute, is sort of fitness movement studios that could be kind of more easily lifted than other things. And so just to sort of walk you through the components of the plan, obviously, I didn't want to get into design, and we have a lot of meetings with community and the planning commissions coming up. But the kind of key components of the ground floor, Justin, working from bottom to top, are basketball gym and locker rooms. And kind of the storage that comes along with those. The youth center, which should be rebuilt and by code has a a certain acreage of playground that's outside of it, which we're envisioning happens kind of under the redwoods and around the redwoods. And there's a playground component of that, and it's fenced, and that's part of their licensing. The community wanted to see a relationship of those components to the children's library. So the children's library and its kind of complimentary outdoor area for story time and activities is right in the middle of the building. And then to the northern end of the building are the kind of senior lounge and a multipurpose room that is intended to be used actively by seniors on the mornings and weekdays and by the broader community in the evenings and weekends. And then off of there are a pair of terraces. So in the morning, if you want to be in the sun, you can be on one terrace or in the afternoon on another, great for other kinds of events. It effectively tripled the size of the kind of activities that you can have. And so the pool figures prominently into this, obviously, looking for a location that is as generous as it can be in size, that gets good sun, that's easy to kind of work with the locker rooms and other components. And it is the case that certain elements of the existing pool are within the right of way that's shown there for Terminal Ave. Component of the youth center actually falls within the PG&E land. And so we'd sort of maybe taken for granted that a new pool and kind of responding to all those community desires would be part of this proposal. I'll just really quickly go upstairs, just in the last slide in the deck. So upstairs, the kind of exciting part at the heart of the building is this, the new library, which is, you know, as as came out of that library envisioning process, maybe less of a traditional library with rows of book stacks and more of a really kind of a gathering place for the community. Lots of rooms for tutoring and meetings, places to sit and read, places to gather. It's kind of like the living room of a community, more so than this kind of library we all saw when we went to college or something, or or elementary school even. Off of it is a teen room. There's some staff spaces. There's a series of classrooms, one for art and other making, and then other for group study. And then a fitness room and a movement studio. And so I I think these are sort of preliminary plans. We're just getting into schematic design. We didn't actually want to dwell too much on the the layout of the building so much as how many pieces there are sort of intertwined, interconnected. We think there's a lot of great synergies between all those pieces. But it's tough to wrap all these up in a in a pretty package and have it fit between a lot of the existing conditions. And so that's why you know, a lot of pieces are being kind of pushed and pulled around the site and up and down, as Justin mentioned regarding grading. Happy to answer any questions. I know that's a lot of information in a short amount of time.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I was. So this is questions before we go to public comment, and then before we go to our comments. Just want to clarify what I was supposed to be talking about. So this is just, this is the question part, right? And then we'll come back later in comments. So I'm kind of curious, when I so when I look at the building in relationship to the basketball court, I wonder what the occupancy is of all the rooms, how many people, what's the person occupancy for each each of these different buildings?
Great question, and I don't have that handy. Is it from a standpoint of just how many people would be here at any one time?
Yeah, so because I mean, I'll be, when I look at the basketball court, that gives me a size of sort of likes of scale. And then so I compare that to the other rooms, and I wonder how many people are in, can be in the children's center, how many people can be in that senior gathering? I'm trying to to really get a sense of what that, what that looks like if there's an event there, or if we or you know, how many people, how many kids can be in that in that room in in there, in those rooms, or or even in those breakout rooms? Is that like a, is that a one to two person breakout room? Or what's the, what's the size of that?
Sure, great question. Lot of answers. Generally speaking, the rooms are sized to what they are today and then some in terms of expansion capacity. The basketball gym is a bit bigger than it is today. You know, the one today, I think the the lines on the court are really tight to the wall. We added, I want to say we went from 7,000 feet to 8,000 feet. My numbers are going to be off. The multipurpose room, senior dining room, is 50% bigger than the senior dining room is today. And which 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 doubled the size of the multipurpose room today. So so we've generally tried to right size with expansion each of the pieces. How many kids and parents should be in the children's library at any one time? I, you know, that's not a number I have offhand. We worked back and forth between sort of community comment, programming and staff to sort of get at numbers that made sense. But I don't have the specifics offhand.
I appreciate it. Yeah, that's great. As long as, I mean, you've done this great footage on all of it. So I I was just trying to make, it's hard sometimes, and then you look at something and you look at the other ones, you think, okay, wait, how's that compared? But looking at the children's center comparison to the senior activity center gives me a pretty good idea of what that size is then. So comparing to what it is today. So thank you.
Sure. Yeah.
Councilmember McCarleton?
Um, I was going to ask these questions a little bit later, but since Councilmember Mueller brought it up. One of the things that we see is we need large rooms for meetings, and I don't think we're going to have meetings on courts. But I'm concerned about making sure that we have enough big rooms for meeting rooms. And sometimes you have a giant one that has collapsible walls. You can have two smaller ones. You have that flexibility. But how many people do you think can fit into the larger meeting rooms that you have? Because sometimes we have very big meetings. And how many large meeting rooms do you, are you planning to have available?
Sure, just to clarify, large meeting, meeting. How many people? I mean, I think one of the things, this is meant to be scalable. You know, eight, you you could have probably a five or 600 person meeting in the basketball gym. Obviously, now everybody wants to convene in the basketball gym. The
Want to do that? Wouldn't that destroy the basketball court if we put in chairs and had people? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I don't know. I went to prom in a high school gym. I think you can do a lot. The, sorry. Right now, the multipurpose room is probably at capacity at about 300 for a lecture, maybe a little bit more than that. And probably 150 to 200 person for, you know, round table seated meal kind of event. Upstairs, we've got a variety of rooms from in the middle of the library, there's a few kind of small conference tutoring rooms, so two to four people can get together. There's a group study room, which is just below there, Justin, which is probably 20 to 25 person, if you set it up like a boardroom. So I I think what we've tried to do is have a range of sizes, you know, that multipurpose room downstairs is divisible, so that the the idea is senior dining could be set up in one half, senior classroom could be set in one half for the duration of the week. And then you know, an event in the evening, what's the whole thing? You've got that flexibility. We're going to keep fine tuning this over the year. Yeah.
Great. It it sounds like you've thought that through. Also, I didn't see a place for bicycles. I'm positive it will be there. I just didn't see it on the on the map. So it's it's good to show things like So it's, it's good to show things like that. It would be great if it was covered so it could protect the bicycles as they're left outside. And another kind of odd question. Legally, what happens if there is an earthquake or an act of God in the middle of building? Are you insured to make sure that the building is, is covered if something horrible happens while it's being built?
Great question, not to ask the architect.
Yeah. The building would be covered by building risk insurance policy, which would cover those types of events.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. I'll, I'll ask the rest of my questions when we come back from public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Heron, at this time, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, I would like to invite any member of the public who wishes to speak on our current item, which is D2. Consider the term sheet, conceptual design, and the project review of Facebook's offer to rebuild community facilities at 100, 110 Terminal. You have a public comment on this item. Please engage that hand feature at this time. I'll have the opportunity to open up your mic. Our first public commenter will be Pastor Toria McNair. You are off mute.
Oh, yes. I'm so glad that this is, this process is resuming. I'm a bit concerned that public is aware that this is happening tonight. I know that I got a, because I signed up when we were signing up to do the five. I noticed that 4:30 on the last week, about a public kind of meeting at 6 o'clock. I thought that was a little bit late notice. And I'm just wondering because I think that that had been established is an interface between public and the two entities, the city and Facebook. And of course, the pandemic kind of set that back. I think that is the most important consideration, not the most important considerations now, but there continues to be public input regarding the, you know, as this process develops. And without that, then it, it, you know, it loses its taste and flavor. From my perspective, but, um, you know, I, I would hope that he would, this is that and excuse me, someone's dropping it in there. We would be able to revisit that, that old, the communication thing and tighten that up. So that especially that, that regarding the seniors, that they would be able to get their input in, you know, with the because it's a virtual process, it's different with planning. I, I think we need to continue. I know that we need to continue hearing from those who will be most involved by the reconstruction.
Thank you for your comment. So our final public commenter is Julie Shanson. Julie, you're able to address the city council at this time.
Thank you very much. I wrote in my comment that I'm going to read, and then I have a couple of more thoughts about the guidance that staff was looking for. Honorable council members, I'd like to encourage you to rebuild the Bellhaven Pool as part of a new community center. The existing pool is old with unheated locker rooms and was not designed to be used year round. The water is too cold for seniors and small children. Over the years, we've made improvements to the main pool, replacing heaters, re-tiling, rebuilding locker rooms, et cetera. These same improvements are long overdue at the Bellhaven School. Menlo Park is uniquely divided by 101. The north side has older, smaller and shabbier facilities. It's time to build a state of the art aquatic facility on the north side. Prior to the pandemic, the pool was used for youth lessons and water polo. A new pool could also be used for rehabilitation classes for seniors and those in need of aquatic fitness. I believe that we can pay for this pool ourselves, that we have the money when we want it. That this is what the bonds that we passed for recreation are for, the bond fund. I'd like to see us make this new facility, one that can last for another 50 years with the inclusion of a pool. I also want to point out that this area is vulnerable to sea level rise. One of the questions before you is, should this be a suitable place for an evacuation center for the Red Cross? And I would like you to strongly consider making that a possibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Councilmember Mueller?
So I just wanted to express my gratitude to Facebook for bringing this project forward and for all the the thought that they're putting into this project with the city and with the stakeholders. So it is a rare blessing on the peninsula. When I share it, when I talk about this project with other communities, they are very shocked that this is, we're getting a gift of this size. I also wanted to touch on the pool. So, and I believe Mayor Taylor, you're also aware of this. And I've raised it before in prior meetings, just confirmed with him and he said I could talk about it publicly tonight. John Charlton is very interested in having the pool added to the list of amenities for the projects that he currently has in the development pipeline in in Menlo Park. And so if the Bellhaven was pool was added to the amenity list, that was something that he would be very interested in funding. And the city could also fund it as well. But, 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 but the fact of the matter is it could be a contribution there to go ahead and bring a, and make that pool even better. And so I think when we were having our last discussion, I was thinking, wouldn't it be great if we had a pool that had, you know, the water that pumps up from the ground that kids could run through? And you could have, you know, a state of the art kids' water facility that attracted families to that pool. You know, one of the, one of the features at the at the Burgess Pool that families just love when it's on is that mushroom, that water falls down in the kid pool there. And I can remember when my son was very young, that was one of the things that attracted us to the pool to begin with, besides the swimming lessons, was being able to go to the kitty mushroom pool. And on, on hot days, being able to go to a facility that has those extra features. It's something that's really nice for a community and attracts people and then attracts them to more programs at that facility. So I wanted to share that. And hopefully, the reason why I share that now is because I think staff said that what they wanted to do was start to go ahead and make preparation to bring back an item for consideration for us with respect to the pool. And I think in preparing that item, the, the the option and consideration to go ahead and add a, a pool to the amenities list is something that would help, help with that discussion when it did come to us. So, but with that, this is just such an amazing gift to the community. And I know there's been such, and it's, it's, community members have been engaged in this process. I also want to congratulate Mayor Taylor and Councilmember Carlton for all their work and outreach that they've done around this process. Multiple meetings, a lot of work put in. Thank you very much. And so those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. I have a, Councilmember Nash, do you have a question for staff or for Hart Harleton or for Facebook?
No, please.
For council? No, I'm just. Go ahead.
I have a question for Mr. Murphy, because this actually came up during the subcommittee with Councilmember Carlton and I regarding Tarleton's offer. And I do not remember what was the outcome, just about if another developer wanted to contribute to the project. What that would look like, if it's even possible?
Let's say, yes, we did talk about it at the subcommittee meeting and we talked about it a little bit the last time the council discussed this in the spring. But just to kind of recap, so if someone were to make a philanthropic offer, such as what Facebook is doing now, that is a relatively straightforward process for the city to, to work through to consider how to, how to incorporate such a donation. If the offer is tied to, I think the nomenclature that was used was community amenities, which is part of the zoning that's in place in life sciences area, office, residential mixed use. So through bonus development, people can request to pursue larger development projects in exchange for community amenities. So if, if the offer is associated with that, then the place to reflect that would be in the, in a community amenities list. So the council previously adopted a resolution that lists various projects that could be considered. And there's a separate item for the council's consideration about updating that list. The, the challenge that we're would, would be facing is the sequence and timing. So what we, what we discussed at the subcommittee meeting was the way that it's, we are structuring this check-in or confirmation with the council tonight is whether to proceed with the design that involves the demolition of the pool. Because Facebook has invested quite a bit of time, money in their most recent design that they want to pursue, but they want to kind of get a check-in from the council about that before they continue through this process over the next four months. So the, we would then be faced with this issue of timing of when funds would be available for being able to reconstruct the pool. So, and as, as kind of, one kind of key factor that's called out in the staff report, I didn't explicitly mention in my opening presentation is that the city is required to pursue the construction of the pool. That's not part of Facebook's offer. So regardless of funding, say, say that the council identified the funding source and wanted to incorporate that into the project. The way contracting law works, the Facebook cannot incorporate that into what they're going to construct. So in the best case scenario, we would be able to identify the funding and then there'd be pretty much two construction projects that would be occurring concurrent, occurring concurrently. But another option would be to proceed with the, the new building as proposed by Facebook and then have the pool be a subsequent construction project. So there's, there are going to be some options for consideration. So it will be this matter of timing for funding and what the replacement facility is like. So we, we have some, some time to work that out. But the key decision for the council tonight is continuing down a path that would demolish all of the facilities at once, kind of in a way like level, level the area. And then, as is shown in the plans, there's definitely space to reconstruct the pool, a new pool. There's plenty of space to reconstruct a new pool. Just where the conflict comes is the ground floor and follows up on the second floor to the footprint of the proposed design is in direct conflict with the existing water area of the existing pool. So, so that kind of gives the recap of what we discussed. And then if there's, you've got follow-up questions, happy to field those. And depending on the type of question, I mean, I need some assistance.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Can you put up the, the new design, please?
Yes, yes. Just bear with me for one second.
Thank you. And I have a question for Mr. O'Shea. That's to do with the, with the construction. Will the building be built so that it can be expanded upon in 20 years? If the city desired to expand it, considering the population in that area, base side is going to increase over the next five years?
So I, I would defer to Erin. I think we've had some consideration for opportunities for expansion from a technical standpoint. Erin, do you want to take this question?
Yeah, I mean, right out of the gates, the, if we went bigger than I want to say an additional 2,500 or 3,000 square feet, it would trigger, probably trigger a sequel review. So you could do that down the road. We left room for an easy addition intentionally in this plan. Just above the letter G, there's a planting area and there's an idea that you could add another significant sized meeting room there that would share this courtyard with the multipurpose room and could be independently accessed from the parking lot. And so we thought that a 1,500 to 2,000 square foot addition, which would still fall within the, to our understanding of what the sequel, would not trigger a sequel review, you could do that. Certainly, you could come back and make additions to this building and kind of manage the parking demand and other things. I think it's, in some ways, it's like a ranch house. It's long and rambly, which makes a lot of great indoor outdoor connections. It also makes it relatively easy to add on to in the future.
And what the possibilities also include going up?
Sure. You know, that, that's, that's the least expensive thing to do. But yeah, there's, I mean, I think there's always that potential.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash, do you still have a question?
Well, I'd like to, thank you. Yes. I'd like to get more information about the cost for all of the various options. And I assume that will be coming, but I request that we have it well in advance of the October 13th meeting. Because I think it's something that we need to get significant community input on. And we'll need more than three days to, or we will need more than the regular Thursday release for a Tuesday meeting to be able to get proper input from residents. So I guess first question is, as we're making decisions about some of the various options the city has, you're requesting right now, it's difficult to do that without knowing some of the financial implications.
Let's see. So I'm happy to pull, pull up the slide that identifies the, the three things that we're looking for tonight with that. Okay. So the, the three items tonight, one, one is the term sheet. And with the, the term sheet, at this point in stage is focused on process. And so the, the portion of that, that at this point has the financial obligations would be within section 3A and kind of recounted that, that's not a topic for discussion tonight. We, we tried to provide some context for you and happy to come back in October. Depending on exact timelines, that's where it may be worth a discussion about impact to overall project schedule. So I'm happy to kind of talk through that at the appropriate time. So the term sheet is, is, it's not a required step in this process, but we thought it was worthwhile to bring forward so that people understood the roadmap that we're working towards. And again, hopefully people do find it consistent with Facebook's offer letter and the January 28th staff report about the, with the council's resolution of intent. So the second item, which is probably the most substantive one, does relate to the conceptual design. And that's related to the conflict between the proposed building and the existing and the existing water features of the pool. And to be a little bit more specific about, there's two portions of the Bell Haven pool. There's the waiting pool, but there's the larger offset pool. And so you could generally kind of work around issues maybe with the waiting pool, but the the conflict that we're experiencing is with the main, the main pool. So that's definitely the key aspects that we're looking for council input on. And that's where the estimated cost of $7.4 million has been pretty consistent over the past number of months. So then the third item is related to the project review process timeline. And this is all geared towards trying to get an approved project by January, because that's the, that's the key thing to actually make this real and turn into the binding agreement that would then dictate the overall project timeline. So we just want to make sure that what we're calling out for the steps are in line with that. So those are the three things for this evening. Again, we tried to provide context in terms of dollar amounts for you to be able to weigh in on these three things. And, but we do need additional time to come look back with the specifics for all of the all of the potential city requested items.
Thank you. So I guess the big one is the pool. And I am in thinking this through and just having a lot of my big concern about the pool is I'm happy to support the construction of a new pool and update swimming facility in Bell Haven to go along with the new community center. My big concern is that who is the pool being built for? And how will it be used? I think it's something that should be enjoyed by predominantly by Menlo Park users. And I'm concerned that when we look at how our current pools are, how the swimming services are run by a provider whose motivation is revenue from any source rather than focusing the benefits on to Menlo Park residents. How do we, which is understandable, that is their business. But how do we how do we get the focus back on Menlo Park and the people who will be having this community center in their neighborhood, in their, in the broader district, how do we make it usable for everyone there? And also citywide for all the users. And that's my stumbling block right now is that right now, less than half of the users from all of our pools are from Menlo Park, but we're paying all of the infrastructure costs and capital costs for this is $7.4 million. We pay maintenance fees that are somewhere almost half a million dollars, plus there's other costs that go to maintain the pools as they need upgrades. So we've got a lot of costs that are focused on Menlo Park and Menlo Park taxpayers. The revenue from user fees goes entirely to the service provider. And while I think this is a good investment for today to have better facilities, I am really, I would like staff to aggressively pursue new arrangements with service providers so that we can really focus the benefits on Menlo Park users. First and foremost, and that's, so that's my thought first about the pool. I guess I'll leave it at that at this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Councilmember Carlton, and then Councilmember Mueller.
I have a follow-up question for staff, and I'm not sure if they know this or not. When we have a situation, we have people from outside of our city predominantly using our pool. Is that because they get there first and they book it up and there's not enough spaces for Menlo Park people? Or is that because Menlo Park people aren't stepping up and signing up to use the pool? Because they're two separate things. Have we looked into that?
In terms of the statement from Councilmember Nash, if I come back to that, great statement, great questions. That's what I think everybody's goals are aligned. It's a matter of how we go about that. So the I guess the question back would be, would the retention of the existing pool in its configuration achieve the objective? So I'll just ask that kind of rhetorically.
Absolutely not. I think we need a new pool. However, how we do with that new pool, how we market that new pool is contingent on how we define the issues. So if we have a situation where not enough people, however we put that bar, are from Menlo Park are using the pool, is it an issue of people signing up to use the pool? Do we need to make it more accessible in some way? Do we need to have more fun things like Councilmember Mueller, I love your idea of, I think it was Councilmember Mueller, of having the water sprayed up so that kids can run through on hot days as well as the lesson pool and the lat pool? Do we need to do more marketing to get more Menlo Park people there? Or is it the situation where there's just not enough space and the spaces are getting filled up by people outside of Menlo Park, which would require a slightly different way of addressing the issue? So have we looked into it to determine why they're not more Menlo Park people? Because again, how we respond to that depends on how on what the actual problem is. Do you know at this point, or does Mr. Sheever know at this point?
So Mayor Taylor, would you, okay, yeah, so Councilmember Carlton, I apologize. I was responding to Councilmember Nash. So, right, so that, yes. So I was just, I was trying to do two parts to cover it and maybe I should have just stayed focused on you. So sorry about that. So, so in terms of the actual operations of the pool, I would defer to others for that. So if you'd like me to pull on others to talk about that, but in terms of like the features that you talked about, if you're talking about the physical aspects, yes, what is shown in front of you is a concept does include that splash feature. So this does provide an opportunity to come up with a design that may be better suited to the needs of the community. So from a design perspective, we have that opportunity in terms of the question that you're asking about operations, I would need to defer to others.
All right. So I'm in favor of the new pool. However, I'm also in favor of us working together, whether it's offline or whether it's in the future, to really determine why there aren't a majority of Menlo Park people and then determining what we do about that. But that's not, I realize that's not on our agenda tonight. So I would like to earmark that for future conversations, but I am in favor of the new pool. One of the things that we haven't talked about with regard to this design is the extra expense for the city to make this a Red Cross shelter. And I feel strongly that it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when we get a tremendous earthquake, where we will be in desperate need of a shelter for people to be able to stay in. And I think it's important for us to make that investment to make sure that we have a safe place for people to go in Menlo Park. So I'm in favor of those two things that we had on our agenda to approve or discuss tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Mueller?
I was just going to say that if we bring up those three items again, I can just go through them real quick and give where I am on them. The three things we were asked to provide direction on.
Mr. Murphy, can you put the slide up?
So I'm okay with the term, oh, thank you, Mayor. I'm okay with the term sheet. I'm okay with conceptual design. And and I'm fine with the project review process. However, I would like, I would like when it comes back to us, the project, an option to incorporate the pool being added to a public amenity process. And finally, I was remiss and not also I'm remiss, so I'm very grateful, obviously, to Facebook. Also want to thank the Bell Haven Neighborhood Association, Rose Bickerstaff and Matt Henry. I remember when I first met Mr. Henry over 10 years ago now, he was talking about his vision for this project. So it's just amazing to see it coming to fruition.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
I absolutely agree. I think this is a really great example of people working together. And we haven't completed all the details, but I think it's moving forward very well. So I'm happy to move that we confirm these three points with the addition of putting in the pool and the additional amount of money to upgrade the building for a Red Cross Safe Zone, Safe Building as potentials for community amendments in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Nash?
So I'm confused exactly what we're being asked for in the term sheet and what people are agreeing to, because I certainly would like to see the numbers and the cost associated with these before I even sort of say I'm in favor of it. I mean, I can say on the surface, I'm in favor of the evacuation center for the backup power. I want to see us do something other than diesel. One of the big concerns about Bayfront Neighborhood is air quality. Diesel does not help that. And there's also perhaps Councilmember Carlton can provide more input, but PCE, I believe, has a program where they are helping with backup generators, where they're helping with micro grids. These are all electric. And so I would like to see the city pursue some of these. So I mean, I can go down through more items, but just at the moment, I'm trying to figure out what exactly we're approving when we say the term sheet.
Well, the term sheet will lead to the eventual contract. And so we're not asking you, we're asking you to acknowledge that the pool will need to be removed to construct this building. But we're not asking you to make any additional appropriations or financial decisions tonight. We're just asking you to confirm the term sheet, the conceptual design, and the project review process.
But when we confirm the term sheet, what do you mean? Because if we're confirming the swimming pool, the Red Cross evacuation center and on down, then I cannot do that without costs associated with it.
Okay, maybe Justin can answer that question.
Sure. And thanks for the question for purposes of clarification. So happy to pull up the term sheet, but the way, the way it's written is it gives the city the opportunity to explore the inclusion of a list of items. And so I think it's listed, there's 10 items listed from the pool down to undergrounding utilities. So it pretty much is what Facebook would like to understand is the spectrum of things that we're considering. And so that is our good faith effort of everything that we've heard to date that the city, whether it's come from a community member, council member, city may want to consider as part of the project. Because they need to kind of scope the project, they need to design it. And then we've tried to differentiate between things that are integral to the building versus things that may happen next to the building, on the side of the building. And then that leads into what things may be incorporated into what Facebook constructs versus what the city's going to construct. So the two basic examples I can give are the pool. Facebook is not going to construct the pool. The city has to construct the pool. Facebook's going to continue working on the designs of the pool. And so that's an integrated facility. Facebook will not construct the pool. The other topic that was discussed tonight about the Red Cross Emergency Evacuation Center, we are not asking for funding for that tonight. That can wait until October 13th. But it's great to hear if people are supportive of that in general. That is something that's going to be integral to the design of the new building. And Facebook needs to know that whether the city's on board for making that contribution by around mid-October is, and again, this is tied to the overall project schedule. So we thought it may be challenging for the council to make one-off decisions. And so that's why we're bringing the dollar amount back to you in October with the goal of giving you as comprehensive as possible. I can say that the thing that's taking the most amount of time is the feasibility study for a microgrid. And so that's kind of driving a number of these things. So we're, we're very hopeful that this all comes together and we can come back to you in the middle of October. But that's, that's our good faith effort of trying to give you what the dollar costs are. So what's in the staff report are our best estimates based off what we know today. And so at one level, if this project weren't constrained by a timeline, I may not even share what the numbers are, but we're trying to share based off what we know today.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. That answered your question, Councilmember Nash?
No, I very much appreciate what you're doing. I realize that I'm sort of challenging the, I realize there's the timeline, but I guess it sounds like upgrading the building to a Red Cross Emergency Evacuation Center, which I think sounds like an excellent idea and but if that now becomes part of the integral going ahead to, in the design.
We're not asking for that tonight. So just
I'm sorry, I thought I heard that it was going to be part of what would be now designed into the building.
That was, sorry, Mayor, would you like me to respond?
Yes, please.
So if I misspoke, please forgive me. I do that every once in a while. The decision point for that is around mid-October. And I use that specific one as an example for which we do need a definitive decision because Facebook needs to factor that into the building design. For a building that won't be constructed for over a year from now, they need that decision within the next month or so. And so
It's actually October, not now, excuse the intro.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And so the term sheet, so good, good back and forth to clarify, the term sheet is just intended to identify the universe of things to be considered. So we don't need to take anything off the table right now. But if there's anything you want to add to the mix, that would be helpful for us to know. So if there's, if there are any other ideas, that would be helpful to know. But this, that list was meant to be based off what we know from the past nine months of working on this.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Councilmember Carlton?
So for Mr. Murphy, just to make sure I understand, this is a list of things we may do, not things we will do. It's kind of direction to be considered. Is that correct?
Yes, that's a great way of framing it, but the it needs to be by the time the actual agreement is in place, which we're now targeting for January, will need to be definitive. But there are some items that are coming up, such as that Red Cross Evacuation Center, for which we believe we need that decision in October.
Okay, that's great. And you're saying that basically this is a list of everything that may be considered and you'd rather us not add things to it later? You'd rather us, if we have something to add it in now, so that we can say this is our list of possibilities and then we'll narrow it down as we get more information, correct?
Correct.
Okay, the only thing I would like to make sure is in there. And again, it might already be, but I like to call things out because sometimes you assume and then it turns out it wasn't there. I do want to make sure that we have a secure place for people to put their bicycles. We have a lot of bicycles stolen in the city. I want to make sure that people feel safe riding their bicycle up and knowing that they can lock it up and attend whatever class or swim or what have you. And I want to make sure that that's available to people. That's the only thing I'd add to it. At this point, I wouldn't take anything off, but I agree with Councilmember Nash. That doesn't mean we won't when we find out what the price tag is or what the other things are. But thank you very much for your work on this.
Councilmember Nash?
So very honestly, it does sound to me now and in prior communications with count, with staff, that the pool is already beyond a point of no return. So given that, what I am very interested in hearing from our city manager, Jerome Robinson, is what her thoughts are as far as having Jerome Robinson, is what her thoughts are as far as having resident prioritization or doing something with the pool. Because when I've brought up issues on our current pool, I've always been told it's the only game in town. Live with it or live without a pool is essentially how, it's not as bluntly as that. But essentially, it seems like there is, I'm just wondering, to me, this is a steep price tag, whether it's from however it is paid for. And so it would be, there definitely is the intention to have it be primarily for the benefit of residents. How do we go about accomplishing that?
Well, I think there are ways. I know that the council's been very interested in prioritizing residents. So, but that would be something for us to come back to the council with. We'll come up with some creative suggestions. I mean, I think, as Mr. Reinhardt mentioned earlier, the traditional way is to price the services differently. And I know that during COVID-19, that has not been occurring. But I think, hopefully, I'm hopeful that we will not continue on in COVID-19 world for too much longer. And so that's the best way. But we can come up with other suggestions as well.
Thank you. One of the other pieces that I've heard from numerous residents is that they are interested in using swimming pools either before work or after work. And unfortunately, that competes with all sorts of other users and organizations that want to be doing the exact same thing. And so on one hand, one can say, you know, more excellent pools will greatly benefit that. I just want to make sure that we somehow maintain some sort of control over that issue, because I think that when we say that residents aren't using the pool, I have had numerous people write to me and talk to me saying that they want to use the pool, and they've given up because it's just not available in more than a couple lanes at the times when they are not working or, so.
Right, I mean, I think there's a traditional push and pull or tension between swim teams from between four and seven, and lap swimmers who are getting off work and want to, just as one example. But we can certainly take that into consideration.
So I guess my big concern is just setting expectations for the pool and the residents who will be using the pool and how we proceed with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Did you, I hope that helped what our city manager shared with you. And going back to what we are voting on in this moment, so we can proceed to our dinner break. I am supportive of all three items that are under the staff's recommendation. I also support a fossil-free facility, put that out there. And at this point in the juncture, I'm not sure if we even have a motion, but.
I made a motion.
Okay, thank you. And I'll second.
So just for the record, the motion by City Councilmember Carlton is to approve the term sheet, conceptual design and project review process of Facebook's offer to rebuild community facilities located at 100 to 110 Terminal Avenue, exploring adding the pool to the community amenities list, removal of the pool, and secure facilities for bicycles.
And hopefully, a fossil-free facility.
Exploring fossil-free facility.
Thank you.
As a friendly amendment, does, okay, thank you, Councilmember Carlton.
Councilmember Nash?
We just make sure it says adding more additional bicycle facilities, because I think right now it's sort of worded with the.
Clarifying that, yes.
Yes.
Understood. I added the word added.
Thank you. And then I would fully support the fossil-free. I just wanted to mention, we've had a number of people write in about the environmental impact. And just want to make sure that staff can incorporate those, see those comments, and it can incorporate them as much as possible as they come back to us. But I think fossil-free facility handles it beautifully.
Councilmember Mueller?
I support that as well. And just for the minutes, Ms. Herron, I would add the word fossil fuel-free.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Okay, so the motion by Councilmember Carlton is approving the term sheet, the conceptual design and project review process of Facebook's offer to rebuild community facilities located at 100 to 110 Terminal Avenue, exploring adding the pool to the community amenities list, removal of the pool, adding secure facilities for bicycles, and exploring fossil-free facility. There's no more questions or comments from the city council? None by roll call, and I have a second, by the way, by Mayor Taylor. So by roll call, vote, Councilmember Carlton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes with Vice Mayor Combs recused.
Thank you, Ms. Herron. And at this time, we will take a dinner break. It is 7:45. We will return at 8:10.
Thank you. Some members of the council could disengage webcams and microphones and only engage webcams upon your return. Thank you.
Can I just do a couple of quick housekeeping items?
Do we need to wait for rate of return?
Oh, probably. I was going to negotiate without him present. Okay, I didn't come prepared for small talk, so I didn't know what to say.
Having a nice dinner?
Just as a reminder, we are still live. Having all city council members present, we may reconvene. Thank you.
Okay, and Madam Mayor, if I may, I think that there's some housekeeping issues we'd like to bring up. Okay, and Madam Mayor, if I may, I think that there's some housekeeping issues we'd like to bring up. One is that I think there's interest in continuing item E1 to a future agenda.
Yes.
Okay, and then that's really coupled with the desire to try and complete the meeting no later than 10 o'clock tonight.
Yes.
Okay, and then from a regulatory perspective, CalPERS is requiring us to have the council adopt the chief's contract tonight. And so I'm just wondering, because I don't think there's any issues with the contractor, and I don't know, discussion needed. Maybe we could just do that quickly and take it out of order for tonight, just so we have that regulatory requirement met.
Yes.
Okay, so would you be okay to take that item next?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. On regular business, we have item D6, Approval of the Retired Annuated Employment Agreement for the Position of Interim Chief of Police to carry out the duties and responsibilities of the chief of police to work in a vacant position during the recruitment, to permanently fill the vacancy, and during an emergency, to prevent stoppage of public business. To introduce this item is our Assistant City Manager, Nick Pogaros.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one second here. Hi, good evening, council members, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor. The item for free this evening is a requirement that we were advised of by CalPERS last week. Typically, when a CalPERS annuitant is appointed to the position of an executive at the executive level, it is customary for, under government code, for the Governing Board to approve the individual's agreement. The Police Chief Spiller, interim Police Chief Spiller, started at the departure when the former Police Chief, Chief Bertini departed. He has been with the city since the end of July, and we are asking the city council this evening to approve the contract so that we can continue to employ Chief Spiller. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pogaros. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I had a question about, in the contract, it says, or at least in the staff report, it says, "Contract is until January 31st or upon appointment of a permanent chief of police, whichever occurs first." And I was curious that it seems like typically some overlap is desirable, and so this does not accommodate that?
Yeah, typically, CalPERS allows new tenants to work no more than 960 hours over a period of one fiscal year. And typically, what that equates out to is about six months, full years, about 2,000 hours, 2,080 hours. So 960 is approximately half. That's the term of the agreement. If Chief Spiller's hours expire prior to the end of the agreement, there are some potential options we can pursue at that time. Typically, and Chief Spillers, I don't want to speak for him, but I know he's an upstanding individual. Typically, interim chiefs will make themselves available after they separate for their successor. If there's any questions that may be had.
So this was just because of the requirements?
Correct.
Thank you. And then my other question was, what is the recruitment strategy?
So we have finalized the draft request for proposal. We will be issuing that at the end of this week. It'll be, so where we are process-wise, is we will be requesting proposals to conduct the national search for the next police chief. We coordinated, council may recall, that representatives from the organization Noble made a presentation under comment several months ago about their ability to potentially assist with policing initiatives council may be interested in. We consulted Noble, and they had provided three referenced, three reference. They referred us to three recruiters, two of whom we are familiar with, that those recruiters do work in California. However, since it's a competitive process, we will review proposals from any qualified recruiters. Upon receipts of the proposals, we will review those, and then, if necessary, return to the council for contract approval. Typically, these contracts generally fall under the city manager's authority. Recruitment's can range anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000, depending on the level of service required, requested. And as part of the bid process, we are asking the recruiters to propose the engagement process to help identify the ideal candidate for the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
Councilmember Nash asked my question. Thank you. If you're looking for a motion, I'm happy to move.
I think we need to take public comment. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item D6, regarding approval of a retired annuity employment agreement for the interim police chief position, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the city council at this time. So one final call for public comment on item D6. Seeing none. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. So do we have a motion to?
I'm moved.
So I have a motion by City Councilmember Carlton, and a second by City Councilmember Nash to approve a retired annuity employment agreement for the position of interim chief, chief of police to carry out the duties and responsibilities of the chief of police to work on a vacant position during recruitment, to permanently fill the vacancy, and during an emergency to prevent stoppage of public business. Any further city council discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote. Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda on regular business is item D3, Review Financial Feasibility Analysis of the City of Menlo Parks' Below Market Rate Inclusionary Rental Housing Requirements, and Adopt Resolution Number 6586, Implementing Below Market Rate In-Lu Fees for Rental Housing. To introduce this item is our Deputy Community Development Director, Rhonda Kaufman. Ms. Kaufman, you're on mute. Ms. Heron, are you displaying your screen, or is this Ms. Kaufman's screen?
This is Ms. Kaufman's screen.
Okay, thank you.
And so Rhonda, just so you know, we see a couple of open windows. One of them looks like it might be the presentation. I just want to pull that to full screen. And Rhonda, I might be able to display the presentations if you're having connectivity issues. Just can you confirm that the ones in the box folder are current?
Ms. Heron, just in the interest of time, I'm not sure what Ms. Kaufman's difficulties are. Can we move to item D4?
Yes, we can. If you'd like, I can.
If they're ready to listen.
Yeah, and I can actually probably display the most current presentation I have. So if you can bear with me just one moment, I'll go ahead and display my screen.
Thank you.
Of course. Okay. So this time, I believe Stephanie Hagar might be making the presentation. She's a consultant. And Stephanie, you have been promoted. Perfect. And I can click through this for you, Stephanie. Just give me cues.
Sure. I know Rhonda was gonna do a little bit of an introduction before I started speaking, so I don't want to speak out of turn.
I'm not sure if Rhonda's able to, oh, you have Cara, but I'm not sure if Rhonda's connection is working at its full capacity right now. So Rhonda, if you're available, if you could engage your mic and webcam? Seeing none. So Stephanie, is what being shown your presentation, or is this Rhonda's presentation?
That one is my presentation.
Okay, so we can start with that.
If you'd like, I can, I can do just a quick introduction to Stephanie and a kickoff of this item.
Thank you, Cara.
Okay, so, thank you. I'm Cara Silver, interim city attorney. And what we have here is, as you recall, the city council asked Bay Area Economics to perform an economic feasibility study. And the, the study was premised on the, looking at the city's municipal code involving BMR housing. And this has been a longstanding program that was implemented in 1987 to increase the supply of housing for people who live and work in Menlo Park and have very low, low, or moderate incomes. There is a three-tier process for imposing BMR requirements in the city. If a project consists of zero to four units, it is exempt currently, under the BMR program, from providing onsite BMR housing. And by BMR, of course, I mean, I'm referring to below-market-rate housing. If the project contains five to 19 units, it must provide, 10% of those units must be deed restricted for low income. And if the project contains 20 or more units, then 15% of the units must be deed restricted for low-income residents. The BMR housing program is implemented through the BMR housing program guidelines. And for all rental projects, regardless of the size, the BMR guidelines require that the rental units be provided at the low-income level. And that particular characteristic is slightly different than other cities. Other cities do provide for a range of income levels, but Menlo Park's guidelines are limited to low-income households unless the applicant receives modification or exception to that requirement. So since 2009, the city was limited by the Palmer decision, which is a California court decision. Looks like I'm getting the presentation up. That prevented the city from imposing inclusionary requirements on rental housing projects. In 2011, the city council formally suspended its inclusionary rental housing requirement in order to comply with the Palmer decision. And then in 2018, California passed AB 1505, known as the Palmer Fix, overruling the Palmer decision. And now cities are able to impose inclusionary requirements on rental housing projects. Cities have always had the ability to impose these requirements on for-sale projects, but there has been this legislative and judicial restriction on the ability and authority of cities to impose on rental housing projects. I just wanted to confirm that you all can, can hear my presentation. My particular screen is, is a little bit frozen. Okay, thank you. So in order to reactivate the inclusionary rental housing program that we are now allowed to reactivate in light of the Palmer Fix bill, the, the city adopted, or the state law allows for cities to adopt ordinances, but there are two requirements on those ordinances. First of all, the applicants must be given an option to pay an in-lu fee or provide another form of, of affordable housing, whether it be off-site or, or payment of a fee. They're not required to provide onsite affordable housing under the Palmer Fix. And second, if cities were to want to deed restrict more than 15% of the rental housing units for affordable units, then they would have, the HCD, the Housing and Community Development Agency, has the ability to ask for a financial feasibility study of any, any ordinance going beyond 15%. So when, when the city went to adopt its, its BMR guidelines and update them and to incorporate the Palmer Fix, we did that in 2018. we did that in 2018. And in the guidelines, the city council adopted a requirement that, like the for-sale units, that all projects over 19 units provide 15% onsite inclusionary units. And also that in accordance with the legislation, that, that, that applicants be given the right to pay an in-lu fee. At that time, the council decided that the in-lu fee should be at the, should be equivalent to the cost that it would be to construct those BMR units. And so the council, in the guidelines, created some very specific language to include the, all of the soft costs and the hard costs. And also they specified that there should be some additional costs associated with common area spaces and parking and land acquisition in addition. What we, we have characterized this in-lu fee as a total cost methodology. So, um, the, the guidelines also said that this total cost methodology should be adopted by a resolution. And before the council got to adopting the resolution, the council wanted to make sure that the total cost approach would sufficiently incentivize the provision of onsite units. And the way that was, that analysis was, was conducted was to hire BAE to conduct a study to determine whether this in-lu fee was a sufficient incentive to provide the units in site, onsite. And the BAE developed what is called a point of indifference methodology to test to make sure that the city's methodology sufficiently incentivized the construction of onsite units, which has always been the city's policy with respect to BMR units. So, um, it also, in addition to, to that request, the council had a, had three other requests in, and asked BAE to study several different scenarios to determine whether the 15% requirement was in fact financially feasible. And so I think now would be a good time to bring on Stephanie, and she can explain her present, her methodology and, and the findings that have now been finalized.
Hi, everyone. Should I, I guess I'll let you go ahead and control the presentation. Um, hi, thanks for having me this evening. My name is Stephanie Hager. I am an associate principal with BAE Urban Economics, and I'm here today to present you with the findings. And a little bit about the methodology that we used for the financial feasibility analysis related to the city's BMR housing requirements. Next slide, please. Or can I control? Okay. So the purpose of our study was to evaluate the four different BMR housing scenarios. The first was to test the financial feasibility of the city's current inclusionary requirements. The second was to test the financial feasibility of a 20% low-income requirement, so a higher requirement than the city currently has. The third was to test a, the financial feasibility of the current requirement plus a 2% moderate income requirement. And the fourth was to test this point of indifference in lufi. Next slide, please.
Stephanie, you now have Melson keyboard control.
Oh, I have the control. Oh, got it. Okay. Thank you. Um, okay, so our study focused on eight different multifamily rental prototypes. Two of those are consistent with projects that you might see in the downtown El Comino Real Pacific Plan area. And six are consistent with what you might see in the Bayfront area. Of those six, three are lower density, so not at the community amenities level density. So a base density of 30 dwelling units per acre. The other three were higher-density projects that would be at the community amenities level density, so a base density of 100 dwelling units per acre. The table here shows the size ranges for those projects, so they ranged in size from 12 to 400 units as at the base. The actual projects that we evaluated ended up varying from this a little bit because of assumptions that we made related to density bonuses that would increase the total number of units above the space level density. Okay. So, um, in order to conduct this analysis, we prepared some static performas that evaluated each of the prototypes in each of the BMR housing scenarios. This was for BMR housing scenarios one, two, and three. I'll talk about four in a minute. We looked at that in a little bit of a different way. So what that means is that we prepared some spreadsheets where we estimated total project development costs. And the way that we did this was total costs before, including land. And then estimated the total rental income that each of the prototypes would generate. And that leads us to an estimate of the total value of the project once it's completed. And then the third step is to determine whether that project value from step two is high enough to cover all of the development costs from step one, including a margin for developer profit, and still leave enough of, enough value left for the developer to pay for a site to build the project. So is the amount that's left over consistent with what a developer would need to pay in order to acquire the site to build the project? Oh, sorry, too far. Um, sorry, I have a little bit of a lag, so I'm having a hard time coming through. So the, the assumptions that we used for the study were based on a range of sources. Some of these are published data sources. Some of this was information from recent projects that we're familiar with. And then we contacted some developers who are familiar with the local market and talked to them about some of the factors that would affect feasibility. So that led us to assumptions related to hard construction costs, by which we mean construction labor and materials. Soft costs, which should include a range of other costs that go into the development budget. So this is city impact fees, sequo costs, financing, architecture and engineering, all the things that are not part of construction labor and materials. It also led us to estimates of market rate and affordable rents and capitalization rates. For those of you who may not be familiar with the capitalization rate, this is a metric that's used to estimate the value of a project based on the revenue that it produces. So if you have a certain revenue, an annual revenue stream from a project, the capitalization rate is a number that you can use to then convert that into how much that project is worth, which is essentially a measure of how much an investor would be willing to pay for that project based on the revenue that it produces. I want to note that we collected these assumptions and did most of this analysis at the beginning of 2019. So we know that some things have changed in that time, something to be aware of. Here we have a summary of some of our high-level assumptions and findings from the analysis. I, so we sort of grouped this into three major types of projects. So we have the downtown El Comino Real projects, the low-density Bayfront area projects, and the higher-density Bayfront area projects. We ended up sort of assuming fairly consistent assumptions between these projects for each project type category. We did talk to some developers who said that, you know, generally you would see some efficiencies as projects within a category move up in size, particularly related to soft costs, so things like architecture and engineering fees. We did sort of start playing with those numbers in our performas and found that they didn't really move the needle much in terms of, it didn't make or break whether or not any of the projects were feasible. So it's not to say that those efficiencies never exist, but that they were relatively small in comparison to most of the other costs that we were looking at and a lot of the other assumptions and how much that swung the feasibility factors that we were looking at. Um, you may see that there are some, some lower per-unit costs and values as you move up to the higher-density projects. This really reflects that we assumed some smaller units in those higher-density projects and also a lower parking ratio, which would help to make those costs and, and values lower on a per-unit basis. So findings for scenarios one, two, and three. For the high-density Bayfront area prototypes, these are the community amenities level, community amenities level projects. We found that the city's current inclusionary requirements are, do tend to be feasible for those projects. We also found that a 20%, so the higher inclusionary requirement, the 20% requirement would also be feasible, particularly if that 20% requirement counts toward the community amenities contribution for that project. You enter a little bit more of a gray area if you're talking about adding that extra 5% requirement on top of the existing community amenities requirement. And similarly, we found that the current requirement plus a 2% moderate income requirement would also be financially feasible. For the low-density Bayfront area prototypes, we found some financial feasibility challenges. I think something really important to keep in mind for these is that regardless of what you do with your inclusionary requirements, if all else stays the same, you're unlikely to see a lot of these projects moving forward in the near future anyway. This is kind of for a couple of reasons. One is that we talked to some developers that mentioned that these just aren't the types of projects that they're pursuing in this region at this point in time. They're looking for higher-density opportunities. You know, that may not be a universal opinion, but that is something that we heard a little bit of. Probably the more important reason is that these, these lower-density projects will be built on the same sites potentially as the higher-density community amenities level projects. And these projects, and they just wouldn't be able to compete for sites. Essentially, the, a developer who's pursuing the higher-density project would be able to offer more for the land than a developer pursuing the lower-density project. And so, um, you're, so you know, in general, you're going to see that, you know, a landowner would hold out for the higher-density developer to come along and offer them more money for the land as opposed to selling to the developer who's pursuing the lower-density project. For the prototypes in the, in El Comino Real Downtown Pacific Plan area, we also found financial feasibility challenges. You know, this is sort of regardless of inclusionary requirements, even if we got rid of the inclusionary requirement, we didn't really see, these were super easy to, to make work. This is consistent with really high and, you know, consistently increasing construction costs in the region over the past few years. And so for some of these really small projects that are, you know, 25 units or so, they have a harder time with some of the, the design efficiencies, so you know, you may just not be getting as many units per elevator shaft and things like that. So it can become really hard to make those projects pencil when you're seeing, sorry, make those projects feasible when you're seeing really high escalations of construction cost. Now, you may still see some of these projects in this area moving forward. You have seen projects move forward in this environment. And there are a few factors behind that that we think are probably at play. One is that some of these projects have a commercial component that can help to improve the feasibility of the overall project. You may in some cases have landowners who have owned their land for quite some time, and so they, they're not trying to pay market rate land costs through the building of the project. And you also may have some developers that are planning on holding their project for the time period that they deem is appropriate to try and get a profit out of the project. So they might be saying it won't be profitable if I were to sell it next year, but if I hold it for seven years or 10 years, based on how I expect prices to escalate, at that point, I'll be able to get my benefit from this project. So on to BMR scenario four. This is the point of indifference in lufi rate. The task for this portion of the study was to evaluate the in-lu fee rates that are approximately equivalent in cost to providing inclusionary units onsite within a project from the developer's perspective. And the reason why we're looking at this from the developer's perspective is because the question that was posed was, you know, what are the fee rates where a fee that's higher than this amount incentivizes a developer to provide the inclusionary units onsite? And a fee that's lower than this amount incentivizes a developer to pay an in-lu fee if they're allowed to do so by city ordinance. Um, one thing to keep in mind related to the point of indifference in lufis is that you are not going to, there's no, there's really no way to have an in-lu fee that's an exact equivalent to providing units onsite. And that's because when a developer pays an in-lu fee, that's part of their development budget. It goes into their total development costs for building the project. When you provide an inclusionary unit onsite, you are instead affecting the value of the project once it's built because it reduces the rental income from the project. So there is sort of no, no number that would be in all ways 100% the same as providing an inclusionary unit onsite because they affect the project sort of from opposite ends of the development process. And so what we did was to evaluate the in-lu fees that are about equal to the amount that project value would decrease when a developer provides a unit as a BMR unit, instead of making that unit a market rate unit in the same project. So just a little bit of discussion on how this is different from the, the total cost fee that's in the city's BMR housing guidelines. This, the existing guidelines do not base the in-lu fee on a point of indifference. It's this total development cost approach that you just heard about, which approximates the cost for a developer to build and maintain a comparable unit, essentially in a different project. So it's basically the, the fee revenue that the city would need to collect to then give to someone to build and maintain that same unit in a separate project. So it doesn't look at things like how much the, how much rental income that unit might produce. So even though it's a BMR unit, it is still producing some rental income that partially offsets the cost of building the unit over time as, as the unit is operated. But usually not enough to actually pay for the cost of constructing the unit. So because of that, this results, partly because of that and also because of some other factors, this approach results in fairly high in-lu fees, which then incentivizes providing BMR units onsite. So just to illustrate the distinction between the total development cost approach and the point of indifference fee that we evaluated in this study, the total development cost approach looks at total development and maintenance costs for a unit that's comparable to the unit that is not being provided in the project. And that amount translates to the in-lu fee rate. The point of indifference fee looks at essentially the difference in value between a market rate unit and an affordable unit. And that makes up what the point of indifference ends up being. So one way to think about it is that the total development cost approach approximates the cost to build and maintain a comparable unit offsite in a separate project. The point of indifference fee approximates the impact on project value associated with providing a BMR unit onsite. So in some ways, it's from the perspective of two different people. One is the person who's trying to build the unit offsite in another project. That's the total development cost. The point of indifference is more from the perspective of the developer who's building the project that has the inclusionary requirement and how much it costs them to comply with that requirement. So findings for scenario four, which is the point of indifference. So we found that the fees that represent the point of indifference compared to providing a unit onsite range from, you know, around $300,000 per BMR studio unit to around $700,000 per BMR three-bedroom unit. This translated to about $60 per residential square foot for a project with a 15% BMR requirement or $40 for a project with a 10% BMR requirement. These, these $60 and $40 figures are, um, those would apply to the entire project, not just the units that would otherwise be BMR units. So again, these are the point of indifference fees, not the total development cost fees. These are the fees that you would use as sort of your benchmark of what fee rates are more or less expensive than providing units onsite. So fees higher than this amount would generally incentivize a developer to provide the units onsite. And fees lower than this amount would generally incentivize a developer to pay the in-lu fee if they're allowed to do so. A couple of points on the in-lu, on the point of indifference in lufis. The calculations that we did did not account for the effect of density bonuses. So projects that get density bonuses, that helps to partially offset the cost of providing inclusionary units onsite. So if we were to account for that, you would land on lower point of indifference in lufi rates. We wanted to avoid underestimating the point of indifference for projects that, for whatever reason, are not pursuing a density bonus. Because in that case, you would end up with developers sort of consistently wanting to pay the in-lu fees if you were to charge fees at that amount. And then one final point on the point of indifference is that these are sensitive to differences between what the market rate rent is and what the affordable rent is. So over time, as that balance shifts and between projects where there are differences between between the market rate rent and the affordable rent that are, say, you know, larger or smaller than what would be evaluated in this study, you would see differences in what those fee rates would be from project to project and over time, based on how that difference between the market rate unit value and the affordable unit value shift. And... Well, I can't seem to switch to my last slide, but it was just a thank you slide. Happy to answer any questions that you all have. Thanks so much.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any follow-up questions from the council before I go to public comment?
Mayor Taylor, I do believe that Rhonda has got, or Cara has a finishing slide for the staff, so I'm getting that prepared right now, and we can finish the presentation if that works.
That works fine. Councilmember Mueller, did you want to wait for your question, or was it for?
By the way, it's fine.
Okay.
So, if Cara or Rhonda can engage microphone and or webcam, let me know if we're starting, where we're starting in this presentation. Thank you.
We're at slide eight, Judy, and I'll wait to see if we're on best connectivity. If not, I'm happy to wrap up.
Yes, Cara, go right ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we can go to slide nine. So, we wanted to highlight the Housing Commission's recommendations. BAE did present its findings to the Housing Commission. They had a very lengthy discussion about the item, and they came up with four recommendations. The first recommendation was to increase the inclusionary requirement to 20%. So, from 15% to 20%. We would need to do some additional analysis for this, but that was the first recommendation. The second recommendation was to, they were also interested, if the council was not interested in increasing the requirement to 20%, the Housing Commission also favored increasing a 2% moderate income requirement. So, that would keep the 15% inclusionary housing requirement baseline, but then add a 2% moderate income requirement as well. Third, the Housing Commission was interested in modifying the density and the development standards and other economic considerations that really drive housing decisions. And we're interested in making rental housing projects in particular more financially feasible. And finally, the Housing Commission was interested in adopting an in-lu fee, really as a house cleaning measure to implement the BMR guidelines, which do require a housing fee. And they were interested in adopting a fee at the point of indifference, and that fee should be calculated on a per-square-foot basis rather than by units or by number of bedrooms and other considerations. So, that was their recommendation. Next slide, please, Judy. So, in terms of staff's recommendations, we think that the economic findings in the BAE report can be used for a variety of housing-related policy discussion items. Certainly, these items should be and will be addressed in the next housing element process. We also think that the report, the BAE report, can serve as an important foundation for future zoning actions that the council may want to take, specifically in the specific plan area in reference to the zoning recommendations that the Housing Commission noted in terms of providing additional incentives and making it more financially feasible to construct rental projects in the downtown El Camino area. And then, third, we are recommending that the council move forward with the total cost approach in connection with the BMR fee that is legally required by the Palmer fix, and the city has the ability at this point to implement it right away. We think that it should be implemented in order to allow developers who do want to move forward with the fee option as allowed under state law. We think that there should be that option put on the table. In the long term, I think that staff would like to pursue a square-footage fee that is a more common type of in-lu fee. It's easier to administer at a staff level, and it's easier for developers to quantify upfront. And so, we think that certainly we should do that as the second stage in this process. And then, next slide. So, our recommendations are to adopt the resolution that is in front of you, and that implements the total cost fee. And then, second, to provide direction to staff on how to pursue the Housing Commission's recommendations that we discussed earlier. And that concludes Rhonda's staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so, within the report, there was reference to the assumptions upon which the point of indifference was calculated. And those assumptions were cited as 2019, specifically at the start of 2019. And so, but I did not hear within the report that since the pandemic began, that there was any recalculation of those assumptions or any modification as a result of the change in economic condition that the city presently finds itself in. And I just wanted to ask whether or not there had been any recalculation of that point of indifference or any, you know, formula applied to those assumptions taken into account the pandemic.
Should I go ahead and respond to that? No, we have not updated the calculations based on new numbers. We certainly could. It's not a, you know, super complex calculation to do, but we haven't done that based on, you know, current conditions after the pandemic.
Well, then, I mean, kindly, I ask, if it's not super complex, then why wasn't it done?
Yeah, I mean, so there's a lot of assumptions that go into the report overall. And so, you know, I think once we start updating one element of the background assumptions for the project, it involves quite a lot of other background research to get everything up to speed, that one particular calculation, if you were to call that out, is something that is not, you know, doesn't on its own require, you know, a ton of background research, but it does require some. And, you know, I think we, you know, once we go down the road of updating a portion of the study, it really sort of calls for all of the background assumptions, which is, does end up being quite a bit of additional work to do.
Ms. Hager, can I ask you why, and just why do we do the assumptions to begin with?
I'm sorry?
Why do we go through the trouble of doing the assumptions to begin, of calculating the assumptions to begin?
I mean, they serve as the foundation for the financial feasibility analysis. So, it's, you know, you sort of, you need all of those assumptions in order to develop the models.
Okay. Well, I guess my concern right now is, so ideologically, I very much want to do this, all right? But my concern is from a methodology perspective, the foundation that we're basing, that we're building our house on, these assumptions aren't where we are today. And so, I want to make sure we do this right because this is how we're going to be creating affordable housing in our city. And so, it's, I think that everyone probably was frustrated that those assumptions aren't where we are today. And I'm sure we are all frustrated where we are today, but we're not where we were at the start of 2019 from an economy perspective. And all you have to do is walk around our downtown and look at the empty storefronts to realize that presently. And so, and I don't know whether or not, I mean, candidly, I really don't know whether or not that those assumptions will change the report materially, but that's the concern. So, how much time would it take to go through and change those assumptions to update it for present economic conditions?
For the point of indifference specifically?
For everywhere you think will be material to the report, such that we would need to rely upon it in order to do good public policy work.
Yeah. So, okay, so for the point of indifference, I would say, you know, materially, it's not going to change anything related to the relationship between the point of indifference and the total cost approach fee. So, if you, it's, you know, there's a pretty big difference between what that point of indifference is and what the total development cost fee is. So, if the goal is to adopt a fee that is higher than the point of indifference, and you're doing that through the total development cost approach, I think you can say that you are already there. In terms of the...
Can I just stop you there, Ms. Hager?
Yeah.
You want to get that pretty close, though, to the point of indifference, right? Because if you go over that, then you tip the scale such that, right, that it's overly conservative, and you're losing those opportunities.
Yeah, so...
I mean, you're not, you want a point of indifference, but if you just wanted to make it so no one ever did it in lufy, you would just, you know, pick something really big, or you'd just get rid of the ability to do it, like you're trying to get close enough that there's a decision to be made equitably, right?
I mean, I think that sort of depends on city policy, how close you want to get to the point of indifference.
Well, let's put it this way. In front of us tonight, it's adopt a point of indifference, not to go some unknown amount substantially over the point of indifference, right?
If I could weigh in on that point, so the, actually, the recommendation tonight is to adopt a fee that is actually above, considerably above the point of indifference, and we're calling that total cost approach. That was the approach that was, that the council, as a policy matter, made in the BMR guidelines. And we did sensitivity analysis to determine that the total cost approach was above the point of indifference. So, that's step one. I think you're talking about step two, which is a matter of policy. How close to the point of indifference do you want to get? There's a lot of discussion that if you put the fee too high, then you actually disincentivize construction of even market rate housing. And so, you're right, it's a very nuanced process of how closely you can get to the point of indifference. And what staff is recommending is just to comply with the Palmer fix state law tonight, at least get a resolution in place that is at the total cost level. So, then you're in compliance with your own guidelines and in compliance with state law. Then, in the second phase, go back through the Housing Commission and find out how low, how much lower you should bring that fee in order to implement all of the other housing policies that you have.
Okay. I apologize, I didn't mean your interruption. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I did want to bring up two more points that generally, these housing financial feasibility studies, we're taking a snapshot in time, and we do recognize that there will be ebbs and flows in the economic cycle. It is, this is a very unusual time, and I don't know that you would want to necessarily set your long-term housing fees at levels in this particular economic cycle. The second thing that I wanted to point out is that we do have a hardship waiver built into our ordinance, and so if there is a financial hardship that the particular project is experiencing, then applicants can go through that.
Ms. Silver, my question, but my concern is not, so I'm fine with just saying, "We'll go to a total cost to comply with state law." That's fine. My concern, though, is in those other, are we ratcheting up anything tonight? Because my concern is if we're ratcheting up to 20% in lieu based on 2019 levels, then that in itself is not, I mean, in 2019, we weren't there, and now in the middle of a pandemic with the economy the way it is, now we're going to ratchet up further than we were in 2019. And we haven't done these, and we haven't recalculated the assumption. And the reason why that's concerning me, not because we're going to 20%, which is what I want, you know, which I supported doing, it's because where we are now, if we do that, will that mean we won't get housing built, right? At the end of the day, we want to get housing built. And candidly, you know, I'm very interested in talking, and, you know, we have been moving away from rental housing and trying to figure out how we start, how we start actually building home ownership, right? So, but that's a different discussion for a different day. And just what I'm trying to figure out is, are we premising some of these ratcheting ups based on a 2019 economy, which is going to inhibit housing being built? I have no problem with complying with state law and total cost. It's those other tweaks that I'm wondering, are we premising that on old information? I've been talking for a long time. I appreciate my council member's patience. I will pass the ball.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Those, actually, those are great questions and a great point. At this time, let's go to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Taylors. With this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on an agenda, item D3, review financial feasibility analysis of the City of Menlo Park's BMR rate, inclusionary rental housing requirements, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the city council at this time. Our first speaker is Karen Grove. Karen, you're off-knue and able to address the city council at this time.
All right. Thank you. So, thank you for the presentation. I, my comments are three. The BAE study answered one question that was circulating at the time that it was embarked upon, which is, is our 15% BMR requirement feasible for high-density projects of 100 units and larger? And I would say the answer from this study is definitely yes. That's point one. Point two is that I want to acknowledge, first of all, I'm on the Housing Commission, but I'm speaking only on behalf of myself right now, that the Housing Commission did recommend increasing our inclusionary rate to 20%. And then, there's that other alternative that we voted on as well. But as it says in the staff report, when staff talked this through after the Housing Commission, they recognized that that creates a further inequity in our city because the only place where that would kick in would be in the bayside because there is no possibility of building a large-scale, high-density project anywhere but the bayside. Therefore, we'd be adding BMR units to the bayside without adding them to the rest of the city, and that would exacerbate the residential inequity that we already have and is already a problem. So, I support the staff recommendation to not include the BMR rate at this point in time, but instead, use this study when we do the housing element where we're... when we do the housing element, where we're going to have more public input, more professional analysis, and we can increase the BMR rate citywide in conjunction with citywide zoning changes to make it possible to build higher density and higher affordability citywide. That's my second point. My third point is that on the in-lu fee is that I support the staff recommendation because although it's slightly different in the way it's worded than the Housing Commission recommendation, as Stephanie pointed out, it accomplishes the same objective, which is to incentivize the units to be built. And my understanding is that we've been using that in practice and it has been going smoothly. And we've been getting the units and nobody complains. So that would be it. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. And our final hand that is raised is Dennis Martin. Dennis, you're off mute and able to address the City Council at this time.
Thank you, City Clerk. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Dennis Martin, I'm speaking on behalf of BIA Bay Area. The Building Industry Association represents home builders and apartment builders and other industry associates across the Bay Area. I want to thank Councilmember Mueller for bringing up those questions. And I want to state that BIA urges the council to defer action on the increased inclusionary percentages particularly, but also to reconsider the in-lu fee, principally because at $60 a square foot for 15% inclusionary, that would rank you as one of the highest in the region. The BAA analysis relies on data collected from one to four years prior to the pandemic. And much of it is no longer really particularly valid or useful tool for you in making a decision. We think deferring an action or deferring action tonight is a reasonable and conservative approach to take in order to preserve the financial viability of housing projects that may now be in the pipeline. We offer in our letter just one factor in considering development. And of course, that's rent, rental income. And we show you that rental income has fallen across the Bay Area, but particularly in the San Francisco and Peninsula area. For instance, in Mountain View, rents have fallen over 16, about 16%. Cupertino, 14%, San Bruno, about 15%. Additionally, San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties are seeing rents down at least 10%. So the rental income is a very important factor in this calculation. And we still haven't gotten there. The effect of eviction moratoriums of vacancies is still yet to be determined. It's a very turbulent market at this point. But even if the effects of COVID-19 were less severe or insignificant, notwithstanding the BIA analysis, there is little or no actual evidence that a 20% inclusionary zoning requirement can pencil even in Menlo Park. According to a report by the Turner Center at UC Berkeley entitled "Making It Pencil", increased, sorry, in fact, the Turner Center references multiple analysis showing that a 15% inclusionary requirement did not pencil in representative Bay Area jurisdictions during the strong housing market conditions that existed pre-COVID and must be coupled with significantly enhanced non-discretionary and predefined incentives, such as tax abatements, a cap on other fees or exactions like impact fees, alternative compliance options, relaxation of design and zoning requirements, and greater density bonuses. So we encourage you to defer action and further study this issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. This is a final call for any public comments on item D3. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Taylor may continue.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the council? For staff or for Ms. Hager? Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, thanks. So just some clarity on what projects, what, if we are sort of, like if we do implement some change today with regards to, you know, the exclusionary percentage regarding large projects, that's the sort of one main variable here, that there could be some change from the status quo. Like what projects would that apply to? Like, is it only sort of projects of which have their final building permits? Or is there anything where initial plans have been submitted? Just to get some sense of, you know, who would, if there is some change, you know, are it current projects or is it future projects that haven't been seen that would be impacted by it? And that would be directed at anyone on staff who could answer, if there's someone, or for the consultant, who can answer that question?
Hi. Carla, would you like me to respond or?
Please.
I can't hear Carla, but good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of the City Council, and Deanna Chou, the Assistant Community Development Director. So if I understand Vice Mayor Combs's question about which projects, I think that's a question for the council in terms of the policy of, you know, which projects it would apply to. One thing we do know is that we do have a number of projects that have applied under SB 330. So any changes would not, would not apply to the SB 330 projects because this would, this would be a new requirement, if you will. So there are a few projects in the Bayfront area that are residential projects that are not SB 330. And then there would be some in the specific plan area as well.
Just to follow up on Vice Mayor Combs's question, Ms. Chow. So do you have, is it two projects in Bayfront and two projects in the downtown that are applied under the specific plan or?
That are applied under, so in the Bayfront area, the, there are two residential projects, or I should say, one primary residential project, one mixed-use project that are not SB 330. And then there is a, there's two mixed-use projects or three residential projects, mixed-use projects, one of which is filed under SB 330 in the specific plan area, if I have my projects remembered correctly.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
I just want to do a reality check. Maybe it's because that they always come to us, but it seems like most of the large developments do ask for a density bonus. Is that correct? Ms. Chow?
Yes, so we do have a few projects that have requested a density bonus and that could happen in one of several ways. So it could be through our city BMR ordinance, you can request a density bonus. And then there's also state density bonus law, where you could request, a project could request a density bonus. And then a third option, which is available in the specific plan and in certain projects around town, there's the Affordable Housing Overlay, which I believe you'll see a project later this evening from midtown that utilizes the Affordable Housing Overlay. So we do have a couple of different mechanisms here that do density bonuses. And we currently have a few projects on file right now who are seeking a density bonus.
All right, something that the presenter, I apologize, I forget her name, what she said, what was her name? Mrs. Hager? Thank you. What Ms. Hager mentioned, that density bonuses change everything. That this doesn't assume density bonus. And since density bonus seems to be a part of a lot of the large developments that we do, is she able to factor those in so that we know how this, how, if it impacts them a lot, does that impact them to our advantage, to our disadvantage in terms of getting BMR houses? That comment kind of concerned me. Ms. Chow? Or did Ms. Hager want to answer that? I...
Potentially, this is a question for Ms. Hager from BAE. But our scenarios did account for a density bonus, which I think then helped in the feasibility of providing the affordable units. But certainly, Ms. Hager can provide more details.
Is she available? All right, well, we'll get back to her after she's available. What we're looking, in economic terms, what we're talking about is the just noticeable difference. You know, will someone buy it at $9.95 and not $10 kind of a thing? We want to be able to find the highest amount in terms of value. I don't want money personally, and I think we're on the same same side of this opinion on council. I don't want people's money, I want the places built. We actually need more homes for people. And so I would love to incentivize them to actually build them. But we don't want to incentivize them to the point to where they walk away. And the report says that, if I come down here in my notes, basically that they need to be adjusted over time, the point of indifference or sensitive between market rates and different projects. Now, we have had projects that had over 20% or 20% BMR housing. One of them, I worked on the negotiation on the DA with Greenheart. And we worked with them on impact fees and different things to make sure that we got more actually built than the 15%. So I know it's possible for us to do that in the DA. And I'm concerned about what Councilmember Mueller pointed out, that throughout the presentation that we got throughout the report, it says BMR housing would be feasible under current market conditions. Under current market conditions is repeated so much that I would love to see, I'd love to see that change. I'd love to see how it comes through because I don't think we're in the short term for the COVID issues. And we're seeing rents come down, we're seeing it flatten out in terms of people moving at least into the area. Although a lot of people work in Menlo Park and live in the area and want to live here because of the work and we don't have the housing work balance, I would still like to see how that works out. And I want to understand how the density bonus impacts this. Because we don't want to make the wrong decision and have to come back and clean it up later. We want to make sure that we have all of the correct information possible to be able to make an accurate decision right now to Councilmember Mueller's point. And I generally agree with the staff recommendation. And I don't mind moving up the required BMR houses. I know we can do it, but I wonder sometimes, should this be flat across the board where it scares off people from building in some areas and incentivizes them to build more in the other? Or should we say, being transparent, this is our target, we're going to negotiate project by project? Because in some projects, we might get more than 20 if we negotiate, depending on what's happening. So is Ms. Hager available to address that or is she gone?
Hi, I'm back. Sorry, I lost my internet connection for a moment. So I'm not sure if I caught all of the question. I did hear you mention that you would want to see current data to know whether or not it's feasible now to do the 20%. And also to have the density bonus incorporated into the point of indifference calculation. Is that the question that you're looking for in your statement?
Well, first of all, what were you talking about? I just want to make sure I understood your point on how the density bonus can change this.
Sure. So the density bonus, you know, by offering additional market rate units in exchange for providing affordable units, it offsets some of the costs associated with providing those affordable units. So the, if you factor in the density bonus in the point of indifference calculation, you will effectively end up with lower point of indifference fee rates than you would get if you do not factor in the density bonus. So what that would mean is that for projects that are pursuing a density bonus, you know, sort of, it throws off the calculations in a few different ways. It might make it so that a project, rather than providing the inclusionary units and deciding to provide the density bonus, might say that it's advantageous to instead pay the fee. It might also mean that for projects that, for whatever reason, aren't pursuing a density bonus, which sometimes is the case even for projects that are entitled to the density bonus, they don't pursue it or they don't pursue the full density bonus. They would then find advantageous to pay the fee because they're, no matter what they do, they're not choosing to go after those additional units that would help offset that cost. So you might as well pay the fee because you, you're already at a point where you're not going after the density bonus. Does that help?
It does. And my concern is that not all horses are the same, are the same breed. Like you might have one set of a project pencil one way in one area and pencil another way in another area of Menlo Park. And it depends on whether it's mixed-use, whether it's fully only housing. There are a lot of different moving parts. Do you think it's better to set a higher part that could potentially, is she still there? I'm not sure. Hi.
Still here.
My fear is saying, we want 20% might actually scare off some people who wouldn't build in some areas. Do you think it's better to say, we would, we have 15%, but we're going to negotiate with you, you know, being transparent to get higher than that? How would you, how would you structure that? Because I really struggle with, I want people to build housing and I want people to build housing that includes BMR. I don't want to scare people off. But you see what I'm saying? Different projects pencil differently, depending on the type of project. How do we build in some flexibility with this so that we do what's best for the community in terms of balancing, getting things built and frightening people, the developers?
Yeah, so I would say, you know, as part of this study, we sort of, we didn't lay out a full, you know, inclusionary policy and sort of a step-by-step walking through how you would get from point A to point B. That's sort of something that you certainly could do and that we could do, but it wasn't something that we really, you know, put pen to paper to tell you how to, you know, how to balance those different incentives. There, you know, there is some flexibility associated with doing it at the development agreement level, like you're suggesting, you know, and there are definite trade-offs between having things set in stone as a policy that is, you know, predictable and on paper versus, you know, having that policy be too stringent versus having it be not, you know, not getting you everything that you want. So there are sort of a lot of factors to consider there that were sort of beyond what we delved into as a part of this financial feasibility analysis that you certainly could consider as you're, you know, thinking about this through some of your next steps on this.
Okay, so just to share where I am on this, I agree with the total cost. That seems to make sense. Basically, I agree with staff findings. I wish, and I'll just throw that out there for discussion, I wish we would take the rest of this and take a step back. And if we want to update the study, my fear is it's a moving target. I think things might be getting worse. Actually, I hate to say it, but I'm pretty sure things are going to be getting worse before they get better. And it makes me very nervous. Man, in my dreams, we would be doing as well as the beginning of 2019. And we're just not there. And I think it's, I think we're moving further away from that. So it makes me very nervous making any percentage in stone decisions at this point because we don't want to accidentally, position do no harm. We don't want to move backwards. I see Councilmember Mueller has his hand up, so I'll let him speak.
Councilmember Mueller?
Well, I just wanted to say, I mean, maybe we all jumped the gun based on what was in the report about the 20%. Because in looking at the recommendations this evening, I actually don't see any staff recommendation on percentage. So I see the total cost and I see staff's going to explore the other areas. So if the only thing that bore us this evening is total cost and the percentages are still going to be explored, then I'm fine with that and I'm ready to move on, I think. So...
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I agree. There's, my impression is that we're just going for the 15% right now, which is where we are. That's what everyone in the pipeline... That's what everyone in the pipeline has been counting on, so it seems to me that that is a safe place to stay. And in the future, I do think, it sounds like all of us are entrusted in, when the economy recovers, when things get better, in seeing what we can do to increase that percentage. But for now, I am also at 15% with total cost. I do want to raise one other piece that's not specifically on the agenda tonight, but that's, at some point, I would like to look at our BMR housing and see what we can do to also, to include square feet in addition to number of units. And the reason why is, we've seen a couple projects in specific plan, in the El Camino Real area, where they're just missing providing, being required to provide BMR units by the number of units they're providing, and yet they're rather large luxurious units. And so, one in particular is the, at 115 El Camino Real, which used to be a 13-room Stanford Hotel, and it's now, has been torn down, and is, the project's about 10,260 square feet, and it's going to be two commercial condos plus four residential condos. So it just misses hitting the five-unit BMR requirement, but they're very large units. It's in fact going to be, it's qualifying under the Housing Accountability Act because of how much housing there is. And it seems like this is a situation where we've got some very large units going in, and it would be nice to have some alternative measure in addition, for the future, of course, to measure BMR requirements by, in addition to just number of units. So, and I guess just, you know, these are, ones, they have one, two-bedroom, two-three bedrooms, and ones that's called a larger owner's unit. And just again, would love to see square footage somehow added in addition to number of units that they would both trip a BMR unit, BMR requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on, and I'll just sort of stop. I'm supportive of the direction we seem to be heading, which is, again, no change when it comes to the inclusionary housing percentage or formula, and sort of, you know, adopting the sort of total cost scheme. The question I have in relation to the public comment from Ms. Grove, I mean, she brought up this, first of all, if you look at the feasibility study, what it said, that in many respects with the inclusionary percentage, it only makes sense with regards to large, large 100-plus unit projects. We've seen them in smaller projects mainly because you're dealing with, I think, property owners who acquired land a long time ago. But right, you know, in theory, it doesn't sort of pencil out for someone to go and acquire land at current prices and do smaller projects, and then have to, and then it sort of pencils out at the, even the 15%. And so, one of the things that Ms. Grove mentioned was this, and so that's why we, it does, it is feasible with regards to large projects, which are currently only taking place in the Bayfront. And Ms. Grove talked about this idea of a future state in which there was also large projects on the west side of town, and thereby you wouldn't have this scenario, which this would set up, of all of the, or of a huge concentration, a continued concentration of BMR units in one neighborhood of the city. And so, my question then, that lead up to staff is, are there places where we can realistically say that, as you go west in the city, that you could see these larger 100-unit projects, where then this actually becomes feasible, some of these inclusionary percentages? Like, because I, if, there have been two relatively recent large projects on the west side of town, you know, 100-plus, but they all, but both of them took place on what were vacant, vacant lots, longtime vacant lots, or essentially vacant lots. And I don't know that they exist anymore in, as you make your way, your way west. And so, again, my question to staff is, are there, like, you know, are there real projects on the west side of town that are feasible, that really are at that 100-unit level? And thereby then essentially making some of these inclusionary percentages feasible based on this study that we just got? Because I'm concerned that it's not there. And in that, you know, as we talk about 20%, we are again talking about 20% in one neighborhood. And that this idea that we're actually going to see that in other portions of the city is going to be illusory. And so I would just say that, like, again, I'm comfortable where we're landing, but that's my, you know, my concern, that, again, based on the study we saw, it's not feasible, really, under 100 units. And under 100 units only look like it's taking place for the foreseeable future in one neighborhood.
I believe that's a, thank you, Ms. Chow.
Thank you. So, yeah, that's a very good question in terms of, you know, there's a lot of consideration for, you know, how land gets assembled, you know, where are the larger sized parcels that we potentially see more so in the Bayfront area? There, you know, a lot of development has occurred within the specific plan area, and perhaps this is also something where Stephanie can chime in, but it's not, I think there's two things, you know, one is number of dwelling units, but also the density. So there is higher densities that are allowed under the RME zoning district, which was part of the Connect Menlo project. I believe the highest, the maximum density under bonus level is 60 under the specific plan. So there is opportunity to increase the density, which could achieve higher units. The sites aren't as large, so you won't see the, you know, 300-unit projects unless there's considerable consolidation of parcels, but potentially with the increase in densities, you get the economies of scale that you see with the larger projects.
And you would say sort of density versus units, because, again, I would think that density has a cap, right? You can be as dense as you want, but if you can only build, like, I don't know, 10 units or 20 units, you're really not going to get some of those economies of scales when you can build 100 units. Again, I could be missing something, and we can sidetrack or sideline this conversation, but I just, again, and I appreciate your answer, but again, that's just my concern, right? And how I'm going to be framing this going forward, that as we look to change these percentages, like, is it going to be a real percentage change that really, when it comes to real actual projects that are going to happen, that we could see that across the city? Or is it going to be something that's, in paper, you know, in paper, it applies across the city, but in reality, because based on this own feasibility study, it's really only going to happen in one place? Again, because I do think it, and I could be missing the point, I'm not an expert, I do think it is, it's density, but more, I think it is units, right? You can really get some of those economies of scales when you can throw more units at a project. And when I look, again, west of Highway 101, there's only a, like, maybe one property that comes to mind, that I see that as a possibility. And then, in other situations, it's a lot of cobbling together of properties, again, at current rates, and to me, it just seems like really sort of, you know, a little bit of a fantasy thinking. And so, anyway, those are my concerns. But thank you, Ms. Chow, for your answer. I do appreciate it. And again, like, I mean, it could be, it could be all density and not just units, but I really do see that differentiator as being able to have lots of units.
Sure. And just from another lane's perspective, you know, there's, besides density, there are other factors that go into development too, in terms of parking. And so I think, you know, parking type effects, you know, the parking ratios, and are you providing that underground or above ground? And certainly that takes up space. So it's looking at sort of the combination of the different factors that go into development that lend itself to, you know, what type of improvements are on the site. So there's multiple factors that go into development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to thank Vice Mayor Combs, because I think that's a really important point that you just brought up. And with that, I just want to underline the fact that a lot of this, I think, should be used as foundational information for zoning, looking at zoning throughout the entire city, definitely in the downtown area, but citywide, and just see what opportunities are available to encourage more housing. I don't see, as you're saying, I don't see 100-unit opportunities, but we certainly need more housing, and with the RENA numbers coming and all, we'll be looking for it. And I think that this is a really good, this BAE study gives us a lot of insight in going into that exercise. Having said that, I would like to move the motion forward, as the staff has written it, to review the financial feasibility analysis of the BMR units.
Thank you. So I have a, first, our motion by City Councilmember Nash, and a second by City Councilmember Carlton, adopting resolution number 6586, implementing the low market rate in Lufes for rental housing as prepared by staff. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none. By a roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton. Hi. Councilmember Mueller?
The motions to move forward, the recommendations of staff?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Just for clarity, that staff is moving forward with the taking into consideration what we've discussed and our concerns. Is that understood, or does that need to be there?
That's certainly my understanding.
Okay, great.
So.
Ms. Chow, did you, okay, they both went away. Okay. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I just want to state for the record for staff, that I would expect that before any of the items come back to us, under the second part of recommendation, which was sort of vague, but to explore, that I would expect that the BAE study would be updated to reflect current conditions. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
My only comment would just be, what are current conditions? Because they are evolving so quickly. And Councilmember Mueller likely knows much more about that, certainly than I do, with his business background.
That's kind of my, yeah, Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
That's kind of my point, I see, is that I think that right now, till we reach like some level of stability, I think it's going to be really hard to try to figure out how we would move those other dials. So, and I know that this council is very committed to housing, and we want to, we want to see it produced, so how we move those is going to be really important.
Thank you. And in light of the time, we still have one more presentation that I believe will be less than 10 minutes. So I'm going to move, take item D5 first, which is, adopt a resolution number 6587 to supersede resolution number 6490 to increase a loan to Mid Penn Housing from 6.7 million up to 9.331 million for an affordable housing development project at 1317 through 1385 Willow Road. And to introduce this item is our Deputy Community Development Director, Rhonda Kaufman. Councilmember Mueller?
Madam Mayor, if it is appropriate and allowable, I would actually, at this point, say that, from my perspective, I don't need the staff report, I can move to the motion.
Okay. Councilmember Carlton?
I want to second it, but I would like clarification on something from Cara. Cara's available?
Sorry, Ms. Kaufman.
Other one. So I know I beat this horse a lot, but this is exactly when I start giving my speech about, I want to make sure that any housing that's built is priority for the people who are working in Menlo Park and the people who are living in Menlo Park. My deepest concern is for someone who's teaching, for example, here, and having to drive an hour each way because they can't afford the housing, rather than someone from another community who more randomly wants to move here. And I know that there are limitations legally on how many units can be reserved like that or preference like that, depending on how much money we invest in the project. So according to the notes, when you, it seems that it's not just moving up to 9 million, it's moving up to 12, as I understand it, if you consider all the things that are being waived and all the other. I would like to know, if we're moving up 50% or more on what we donate, are we getting 50% more dwelling units reserved for the people who live and work in Menlo Park or preference? I know this is the more legal way of saying, for the people currently living and working in Menlo Park, because that is, those are the people I'm most deeply concerned about.
Thank you. So we have actually already begun the discussion with Mid Penn about the long-established city live-work preference. And we, there also is a legal component to, that we have to do the sufficient analysis to make sure that the existing preference comports with fair housing laws. And so we are doing that analysis, and Mid Penn has committed to us that they will honor a preference, and we are in the process of putting that together. We can report on that once the analysis has been prepared. I think we have another meeting in two weeks to go over the preliminary analysis.
And how does that work? If we give, it's approximately 7%. But the total amount, it says in the staff report, is about 15%. Does that mean we can reserve 15% of the units?
So I'm not sure. I was assuming that that's the case, but I think that we're still under negotiations with that, so I can't give you an answer with any certainty at this point.
Isn't there legal precedent for how this has been done previously?
Yes, and I, and, but it's going to be dependent on the.
Not our first video with Mid Penn Housing doing this. What did we do last time?
Right. You might want to call up Mid Penn, or Rhonda may be able to answer that question.
Because I'm happy to give Mid Penn the funds that they need, but I want to guarantee that we're going to have a proportionate amount of houses with a preference for people living and working in Menlo Park. That's very important to me.
Right. And like I said, you know, I'm sure that Mid Penn can answer that. There has not been any resistance, as far as I know, to honoring that.
Okay. I'm surprised that we don't know the percentage already.
We do have representatives from Mid Penn with us. There's Jan, Andrew, and Serena. If any of you can address City Councilmember Carlton's question, you can engage your web and mic this time.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Taylor and members of the City Council. This is Serena, Project Manager with Mid Penn Housing. Oh, sorry, I just found the button for the camera here. Hi, how are you? Ms. Silver is correct that we have started the legal analysis, and Councilmember Carlton, And Councilmember Carlton, you're correct as well that we do have a preference in place for Sequoia Bahaven, which was one of our projects in Minlo Park, next to the Gateway Family project that's in front of you tonight. For Gateway Family, 82 of the units, 82 of the 140 are reserved, if you will, for the existing residents. And there will be a net of 58 new homes that are under consideration for the preference. The preference does still need to go through legal analysis, but we are working with a third-party attorney to look at how we can implement a live-work preference, a neighborhood preference, and a displacement for folks who have been displaced. And that is from the information gathered throughout community outreach and by council and planning commission over the last few years. And we will have an update soon. We are meeting again in two weeks, like Ms. Silver said.
Okay. I know that we're all on the same side. I just, I really have to publicly put pressure that I would like to see as many units as possible as a legal reserve to help the people of Minlo Park. Thank you. So I'm happy to second the motion.
Councilmember Mueller?
I'll be brief, because I know we want to wrap up. I am curious, and I'm not going to ask for this project, but have you ever done projects where a certain percentage of the, of the units were made available for sale to very low and low affordable?
Um, not, Mid Penn has not. We do have us, you know, we do work with Hello Housing. That's a sister organization that I believe Minlo Park is very familiar with. But Mid Penn has not done that.
And do you have housing projects where you've partnered with Hello Housing, where they've taken a portion and done that? And then you've had a portion for rent? Have you ever done that collaboratively?
So where a portion of it would be for sale, homeownership opportunities for low income.
Right.
I think we are starting to look at this at our midway property, which is located in Daly City, the Bayfront neighborhood. But so far, we don't have a property in operations like that. We joined in partnership with Hello Housing a couple of years back and have been exploring this scenario.
So, to my colleagues, I'm more and more inclined to be interested in this model. The only way that we're ever going to really bring equity, I believe, social equity to housing is to give people opportunities to buy and build their own equity. Obviously, this is an affordable housing developer, and they're going to be able to keep rent at low levels. But in the future, I think we need to start to figure out a way to prioritize at least mixed use in that area. I just think it's time. So, so with that, and that is obviously right in line with what our discussion was earlier in the evening. So, but I'd love to see staff come back to us with the policy to try to go ahead and try to go ahead and figure out a way that we can do that project such as this. So, anyway, we can go ahead.
I need to take public comment. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item D5 regarding a resolution adoption to loan Mid Penn Housing from 6.7 million up to 9.331 for affordable housing development, please engage that hand feature. You'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the city council at this time. And our first speaker will be Karen Grove. Karen?
Thank you. So, super brief, I fully, I'm a member of the Housing Commission. I'm speaking for myself. I fully support approving the request. We're in it to win it. Let's take it to the finish line. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. And our final speaker is Kevin Gallagher. Kevin, you're off mute, be able to address the city council.
Thank you. Hi, I just wanted to speak to the point that Councilmember Mueller just made. That sounds like a really great idea. I would also love to see that explored in the future. I know in San Francisco, the Mayor's Office of Housing and Community Development has a relatively robust low-income housing ownership program. And, yeah, I think, you know, low-income rentals are great, but ownership is the goal. So if that's something that can be looked at in the future, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further hands raised. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. And thank you for the public comment. And my only question is for Ms. Silver, is can we include in our financial commitment the condition to look at the preference that Mid Penn has already shown interest in? I think it was stated back from last year that you are already in talks with them, if that can be included, so that we know as Councilmember Carlton that it will actually happen?
Yes, absolutely. That will be included in the loan documents.
Okay. Thank you. And do I have a motion to approve this?
So we do have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Mueller, a second by City Councilmember Carlton, to adopt Resolution Number 6587 to supersede Resolution Number 6490 to increase a loan to Mid Penn Housing from 6.7 million up to 9.331 million for an affordable housing development at 1317 through 1385 Willow Road, including prioritizing people who work and live in Minlo Park. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, by roll call vote, Councilmember Carlson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. And in light of the hour, we have one item remaining, but I am in favor of continuing it. So Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson, is that an issue? I know that there isn't really a deadline, even though the Innovation Fund is something extremely important. But just wanted to check in first.
There's no hard deadline on it. I think it's perfectly fine, given the late hour, to continue it to a future council meeting.
Thank you. And thank you all for a robust conversation. Have a good night. Meeting adjourned.